Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, excuse me, will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela will be absent this evening. Councilmember Mayfield.
Here.
Vice Mayor Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protam Vang.
I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Mayor Protam Vang, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous peoples and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin and Winntu peoples, and the people of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor Protam, thank you, members. Welcome to the members, welcome to the city staff. Always most important, welcome to the members of the public who are in chambers and are watching online or on cable or on CNN, whatever, you know. We have a very important meeting tonight where we're going to discuss the city-county partnership agreement around homelessness, but let us begin with a couple of special presentations. I'd like to start with recognizing Building Safety Month and welcome Bob Latz, our chief building official here at the city. Bob?
Mayor, council members, on behalf of the Building and Safety Division as well as all the members of Community Development and Fire Prevention, we thank you for your acknowledgement and your support. Day in and day out, we provide for the life safety of our citizens and the community. Building Safety Month is a yearly event in recognition from the International Code Council to acknowledge and bring awareness of the work we do and the lives we save. Our efforts contribute to creating and maintaining the quality of life for our residents, business members, and visitors, which is in concert with our mission to help plan, build, and maintain this great city. Thank you again for your recognition and support.
Thank you so much, Bob. You know, an issue that we should never, ever take for granted, right? The safety of our buildings, whether it's earthquake, whether it's other codes, and you know, one of those essential functions of a city that we may not talk a lot about, but this is an opportunity to say thank you to you and all, everyone who helps keep Sacramento safe.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that that was the shortest presentation in the history of city presentations. For that, come back anytime. The second presentation recognizes the 2023 City of Sacramento Planning Academy participants. Is Alexi Wardell here? Alexi, welcome to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Alexi Wardell. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department, and it's an honor to address you all tonight. Over the course of the past three months, my colleagues Laura Toller, Vic Randall, and I had the privilege of working closely with a remarkable group of individuals known as the Planning Academy participants. Together, they represent all of our council districts and serve Sacramento communities through their employment and active involvement in housing, public health, arts and entertainment, construction and real estate, community development, education, and labor advocacy. As a program facilitator, I had the opportunity to engage with them in the class every Monday evening. They are an extraordinary cohort who possess a genuine curiosity, thoughtful perspectives, and an unwavering devotion to making Sacramento a better place for all of us. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to these participants, again, for their dedication, not only to the program, but also to the well-being and advancement of our city. I'm delighted tonight to introduce one of the standout individuals from this year's Planning Academy, Dawn Angelo. Dawn serves as the Sacramento Regional Director at AARP and has made thoughtful contributions to our course all spring long. So I now invite Dawn to share a few words about her experience and open up the floor to her. Thank you all.
Dawn, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. On behalf of the Planning Academy class of 2023, I would like to express our appreciation for the opportunity to participate in this year's City of Sacramento's Planning Academy. When we first embarked on the journey this past March, we each wanted to learn more about the city's planning processes and how we could be involved. I don't think any of us truly could comprehend what we would gain from the experience. At our first session at Oak Park Community Center, we learned of our group's rich geographical, professional, and cultural diversity. We discovered the length of time we each called Sacramento home differed as well. Some of us were born and raised here, while others of us relocated from other parts of the world, country, or state. But there's no question, we all consider Sacramento our hometown. Our interest to participate in the program weren't derived from individual agendas or how planning might impact our own families or workplaces, although they certainly do. But we each came with a true desire to make Sacramento a better place to live now and for future generations. We were fortunate to have great guides along the way. City staff and planners met with us over the course of 11 sessions, providing overviews on planning processes, how planning shapes the communities where we live, and how we could participate in the process. We learned of the different types of planning, from long-term to environmental. We learned about the city's efforts to preserve our history while also paving the way for new growth. And we challenged each other and asked probing questions of our presenters. We had the opportunity to share our thoughts and personal experiences in real time. There was often discussion on the equitable and sometimes inequitable distribution of resources. The 11 sessions went by quickly, and it still seems hard to believe we have reached the end of the program. But we have also come to realize the program was just a starting point to a much longer journey. In speaking with my fellow classmates about the commitments they've made as a result of their participation, some have expressed an interest in serving on city commissions or even running for office. Others have--
Oh!
It's true. Some have even expressed a commitment to sharing, or renewed commitment to sharing their thoughts and ideas when solicited to provide feedback or participate in community meetings. And one thing I know for sure is that each of us is committed to providing feedback on the 2040 general plan, with the first opportunity occurring just last week at our celebratory closing session. Of course, no successful journey is ever taken without exceptional leadership. Our journey would not have been possible without the amazing support provided by Laura Toller, Alexi Wardell, and Vic Randall. They took great care for our individual and collective experiences, coordinating and leading each session. And our gratitude also goes out to each city planner and staff member who met with us, sharing their wisdom, expertise, and passion. I think it's safe to say we leave the experience feeling inspired and grateful for the individual to work tirelessly to make Sacramento an even better place to live. In closing, we hope that the city will continue to invest in the Planning Academy. It helps to inspire community leaders, informs our understanding of how to get involved in planning processes, and how to encourage others to participate as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dawn. Let me turn it over to Vice Mayor Geta for a comment, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Alexi and Dawn and all of the graduating class of the Planning Academy. It is graduation season, so let's give them a big round of applause. But I just wanted to thank both our city staff and our participants because our district offices with their small but mighty staff, you know, can't do the work without our, without the community partners and educating our community about planning and how we do it because it has 40, 50-year effects. And Dawn, I know we've had conversations about what it means to our aging community and how planning today will affect folks in the future, not just what we see on, what we'll vote on in the evening. And so I thank you for this because the general plan always gets overlooked, and it's one of the most powerful documents. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your commitment for this, and maybe we will see some of the folks here on the dais as well. So congratulations.
All kidding aside about, you know, running for office, which is actually a good and great thing, the fact that you all participated and gave so much of your time is really a sign of great hope for the community. And I hope a message to anybody who says, oh, there's no way to really get involved or get engaged or to make an impact, to see it differently. I mean, it's a, it's a very hopeful act, in my view, for people who want to make their community better to sign up, learn more, and then figure out what they want to do with it. So to us, it's a really big deal, and we're grateful to you. And thank you to the city for, for putting this on. Rick Jennings, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. Great job, Dawn. I thought you were the voice for your class, and I think you represented them well. You talked about all the wonderful things that happened in the class and the impact that it had on each one of you. So great job of presenting, and I know the class, I saw them nodding through your whole presentation. So you absolutely hit it, hit a home run in everything that you said for them. And I encourage the class to commit to a life of community service. I encourage you to contact your city council members and find out where you may be able to serve, whether it's on a commission, committee, whatever it may be. Maybe it's just a volunteer opportunity within the council office. I would encourage you to continue to build on the foundation that you've received as a result of the planning process, I mean, the Planning Academy class of 2023. I'm proud of each and every last one of you. You went through 11 classes. You gave up the greatest gift that you can give, which is your time, and we thank you for that. And so we're looking forward to great things out of you. We know that you're looking for that yourself as well. So congratulations. I know it was a great experience. I hope you will tell others about it so they can have the same experience that you've had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jennings, council member Talamontes.
So first of all, congratulations on getting accepted into the Planning Academy. I know that it's super competitive, and every year we have hundreds and hundreds of applications, and you made it. You did it, and you completed this. And so we're just so proud of you for, for taking, you know, part of the City of Sacramento and the programs that we have to offer, and we look forward to your continued service. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience, and hello to you. And to the ones that I don't know, reach out, you know? We need as many people as possible to engage in local government because local government is where everything takes place, and it's the most personal, close relationship to the community. So congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you again in these council chambers and maybe different capacities, too. Congrats.
That's great. And now, for your final exam, you must stay at this meeting. Let's do a photo. Can everybody come on up and we can all do a photo together? Mayor Protam, you had something, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
I'll keep my comments short. I just wanted to take this moment and just to say congratulations to all of you for completing the Planning Academy. As you all heard earlier, the Planning Academy is really just a starting point, and before I actually served on this council, I actually participated in the 2015 cohort. And so it was really the, laid the foundation for me to really understand the inner workings of our city planning. You know, right now, housing cost is rising, we see extreme inequality in our city, climate events are disproportionately impacting our neighborhoods, and achieving the ideals of equity, equity planning remains a struggle, right? And this academy gives me a lot of hope because I see all of you being part of the solution, providing us on this dais what we can do to really solve these issues. And so I just want to say thank you so much for putting your time for the 11th session, and I look forward to seeing many of you serving on boards and commission and also right here on the dais on the city council. So congratulations.
(applause)
(laughter)
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 That we, as a city, are always looking for those alternatives and options whenever possible and that these contracts that we're actually going to be, you know, if this is approved, entering into are a way to make sure that we're maintaining it in an efficient way, all of our vehicles, and that, you know, we're always looking for those options. So I just wanted to appreciate staff for always being willing to answer my crazy questions as they pop up, and I'm glad that that's something that the city is prioritizing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No, likewise, Mr. Mayor, also want to thank the city manager for including or moving forward with the MyOp for the ACF. I think it's important for us to start paying accordingly for our transition, and I'd like to figure out how we kind of accelerate that and look at options in the heavy-duty sector such as hydrogen as well. So, thank you.
Very good. Kind of, you know, just say kind of like an unnoticed part of the climate agenda in a way here, right? I mean, should make sure we add it to the public list of things that we're doing, you know? Because there are many things that are high-profile and then maybe less high-profile that are on consent calendars but need to be noted. All right, we do have public testimony. I'm sorry, on the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor. Mac Worthy would like to speak on item nine. Mr. Worthy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilor. People on this agenda, if we had education in our communities, that's where we supple here in law. You all don't know more than wells. What can you rehabilitate a well other than suck the sand out of it or drill it deeper? That's all. How many of you know anything about a well? How many of you know about America's most greatest pump, Miles Pump? Nothing. You sit here and throw these things out here and the community is not educated on them. When was the last time you sucked the sand out of a well? See, people, the earth has veins because of the ocean pressure push it through. Now, in this state, high-rise drill and have cut some of the veins off. So now, what happened to that? You don't have, it goes the other way. But nobody here has the ability to say anything about it. We had an engineer to stand up here and say, "We're gonna pump some water in the earth." People, I don't know what you got a degree from, but that's ignorance. You start pumping water into the ground, you start a suckhole, just like when they put the pumps, put the meters in for water. You just put, you can do the same thing with a hose and go onto the sidewalk and run a plastic pipe by digging down on both sides and pumping the pipe. So, you don't have to go and get a permit to put that under there. I got plastered from the street to the house by doing that. Nowhere else than Oak Park done that. Because they don't know people. Try to get to something, educate young men how to go and make a job of themselves and quit sitting here lying to people. It's time out, and Mayor, it's time for you to go.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
It's only 5:30. Okay. Okay, is there a motion on the consent calendar? Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain.
For the record, that was a motion by Councilmember Kaplan and a second by Jennings.
Okay, the consent calendar passes. Let's now move to item 11, Elder Creek issue. Vice Mayor, this is your decision.
Yeah, if there's no need, Mr. City Manager, for speaking into the, do you need a statement for the record?
Cheryl, do we need to read anything into the record?
No, then I'd like to open and close the public hearing. I want to thank our city staff, working cooperatively with our county partners, which is the theme of tonight, and also with our industry partners to move this item along. And I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Moved in second. We have no public testimony on this item, so let's call the roll. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you. We now move to item 12, the Terrace Park subdivision. Councilmember Kaplan? You want a staff presentation?
Definitely a short staff presentation.
Yes, of course. Welcome.
As well as if there is any public comment, just to make sure.
Of course.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Deja Harris, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. This item, P-22045, Terrace Park subdivision, is a request to construct 79 detached single-unit residences on 8.21 acres located within the Natomas Creek Plan Unit Development PUD in North Natomas. The project requires the following entitlements: a general plan amendment to change the general planned land use designation from public quasi-public to suburban neighborhood medium density; a PUD schematic plan amendment to designate 8.21 acres for residential use; tentative subdivision map to subdivide one parcel into 79 residential lots with a deviation for non-standard street elbows; and site plan design review for the construction of 79 detached single-unit dwellings with deviations to lot coverage and rear yard and street-side setback development standards. The project is before the city council this evening as a general plan amendment requires approval from the city council. The Planning and Design Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval to the council at the April 27th meeting. The Planning and Design Commission directed the applicant to meet with the adjacent property owner to Lot 1 to address concerns about privacy. The applicant has met with the owner and agreed to install opaque windows on the second-story western elevation on Lot 1 to help mitigate privacy concerns. Some key points about this project. The site was originally designated as a school. Twin Rivers Unified School District Board determined the site was not needed and deemed the property as surplus in 2021 because they did not have an educational need for it. The property was sold during a public bidding process in 2022. The subject site is immediately adjacent to Magnolia Park to the north and is bounded by existing roadways Greg Thatch and Trace Pies's Drive. The new internal roadways will be constructed to city standards with a 53-foot right-of-way section. The proposal offers natural safety surveillance with two-story residences that face the street and the park. The project provides parking spaces with two-car garages, and on-street parking will be allowed on both sides of the new streets. Staff recommends approval of the proposed residential use. The project provides a compatible density with the surrounding neighborhood, is consistent with the underlying R1A zone, and builds new single-unit dwelling housing on a vacant, underutilized parcel, creating additional home ownership opportunities. This concludes my presentation. The applicant team and staff are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very, very much. Let me turn it over to the council member.
Mayor, just want to ask also our city clerk, are there any public comments or anybody who wishes to speak on this? I would love to hear from them first.
Yes, I do have, I do have six speakers in chambers. Would you like to take those?
Please.
Thank you. My first is Pinky Bowa, Zainab During, then Lilian Velasquez.
She go first. Thank you.
Did the council get our paper we passed around?
I will hand that out now.
No?
Yeah?
We will, just.
Yes, I do have it. Thank you.
Just a second. Why don't you start your testimony and then we will?
Okay.
Is it okay?
This is not part of my two minutes, is it?
No, it is not.
Okay, good.
You're okay.
Mayor and council members, before any of our neighbors speak, we would like to have, number one, clarification about some specifics on the proposed development Terrace Park, and number two, that any speaker not employed by the developer or part of the city council to please identify themselves and where they live. As far as, as far as the specifics of the plans we were able to look at, how far apart are the exterior walls, sidewalks of the majority of homes from each other? Because we could not find that on the drawings. The lot size, from what I can see, is 20 feet. And the addition of these homes in the drawings seems to allow like 10 feet or more between each housing unit, with mostly the fronts of garages showing with a door. So how wide are the actual homes? We could not actually find that. How far apart are the driveways backing onto Greg Thatch Circle and Trace Pies's? What barriers or similar barriers are proposed between the actual development and Magnolia Park? Since the developers have not reached out to us as requested by the planning commission, and we have only access to very small drawings that we can hardly read with a magnifying glass, it would give us more clarity regarding the proposed project. Can we have some insight before we go any further on that? Or are we gonna wait?
Well, why don't you finish your testimony? That will make sure that your questions get answered.
Because we're kind of running blind here on some things. Are we ready? Okay. My name's Charlene DeMarco, one of the original homeowners and founders of Terrace Park Neighbor Association. We in our community are here today because once again, we are fighting to preserve our community as it was originally planned. My house was the last one sold in 2005. The plans as presented at the developer's sales office show the homes, sites, layouts, parks, and school. In early 2006, a construction trailer was set up on the south side of Greg Thatch Circle. All the residents were so happy to think we soon start seeing the construction of the school.
Thank you for your comments. Your two-minute public comment period is complete. Our next speaker is Zainab Deyung.
Who's talking to me?
Thank you. Your two minutes is complete.
The clerk, ma'am, but we're gonna answer your questions, okay? You've raised a number of questions, and we also have the written, your written testimony. So give us a chance to hear all the public testimony. That I will promise you, we will answer the questions, and if we need to have you come back up to answer some questions, we'll do that as well.
Okay. So what does that mean? You want me to stop?
Your two minutes is complete. Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, you're good. You're good. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Zainab is our next speaker, then Lily Velasquez.
Yeah.
Zainab During, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members and members of the community. My name is Zainab During, and I'm a parent leader here in Sacramento. I am here to oppose the pending proposal of building 79 homes on Terrace Park, and here are my reasons. A lot of people, myself included, bought our homes in the neighborhood with the potential of Terrace Park Elementary School, which is a K-36 elementary school that was promised by both the city council and the Twin Rivers Unified School District. I'm curious to know why the school district listed this parcel as a surplus, because currently, there are no schools within Twin Rivers School District that is open to the community. We have a couple of schools that are in Natomas Unified School District, but because we're in Twin Rivers, we're not eligible to enroll our kids there. Actually, I brought my two, four-years-old here today who are due to go to TK next year. So Terrace Park Elementary School will have been a walking distance for our community. Therefore, the school district decision to list the parcel as a surplus means there is no nearby schools for our children to go. Also, back in 2008, when another developer wanted to build 69 homes in this same lot, the school district alongside the city of Sacramento fought alongside the neighborhood to win the battle. As recently as 2018, then council member Angelique Ashby made a promise that the land remain vacant for the community. So when the school district identified that the land was a surplus, it would have been, only made sense for the land to be used as something else to benefit the community, such as extending Magnolia Park and perhaps having like a soccer field, basketball field, even a multicultural community center would have been great. Thirdly, the fact that the school district auctioned the land for only 1.7 million back in August 2022, when the land is worth way more. Why was this land not advertised for members of the community to participate? I only found out about the sale of the land about a month ago by researching online. And finally, our neighborhood is made up of a large population of immigrants, people from different countries and speak different languages. The pending sign that's currently on the park, it's only available in English language, which I consider discrimination against people who does not speak English. And so I feel like it is the city and Twin Rivers School District's decision to do that, to limit other people who actually have influence in the community, people like myself. Therefore, I am here appealing to you all to really take a pause and put a hold on this and really consider the community input and community feedback. This land, we're emotionally and physically attached to this land. I appeal to you all today to take the interest of the community. Thank you all so much. And also, there's no common area in such as picnic tables, benches for development purpose.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lily Velasquez, then James Dugard.
Hello, I'm Lily Velasquez. Good evening. I just want to oppose to the Terrace Park subdivision. I'm asking that you please don't allow the builder to develop so many homes which resemble tiny homes. And here's a picture of them. That's the front of them. If you haven't looked, I have a copy and I'll leave it up here as well. 79 homes is too many homes for 8.2 acres. If the previously proposed elementary school that was supposedly too small for the vacant land, how is it not too small for 79 homes? That's the reason we were given at the planning committee, is that the reason why the land is not being built an elementary school is because it's too small. So I just want that answer. How can you build 79 homes if it's not big enough for an elementary school? The builder wants to develop as many homes to maximize profit without consideration to my community and the existing homes surrounding the proposed development. Don't allow them to deviate from any of the city's standards, as there are many reasons standards are created, especially for safety reasons and accessibility reasons. Did you know there are no one-story homes in the proposed development? By allowing this developer to continue with the proposed development, you are discriminating against the following buyers: elderly, seniors, people with disabilities. You need to require the builder to have one-story homes mixed in along with some community space since the lot sizes are so small. Please help keep my community safe and less traffic by minimizing the number of homes, as we originally promised a school or at least public-use land. If you would like more homes built in Sacramento, please let the planning committee know where you live so they can build more homes like this project in your community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is James Dugan, then Charlene Donamary. So James and then Charlene.
Thank you. My name is Jim Dugan. I live at 861, I'm sorry, 860 Greg Thatch, just across the street from all this development. I live in a PUD development, which was made by Kaufman and Broad. One of the design principles that they took advantage of was this same zoning that they're applying for across the street. But they made all the parking into the garages through alleyways so that they do not exit the lot onto Greg Thatch. This new development will put 18 two-car driveways on the north side of Greg Thatch, all emptying straight into Greg Thatch. There are no other cars on the south side. Everything's just a line of parked cars. It's very simple. Also, the entranceway for this new development is in the middle of the development. It really should align with Elder Down so that you have a four-way stop, and that would control some of its traffic. Maybe one or two bumps would also control it. The second thing is that they're taking away the parking on the north side of the street and crowding in their design so that they're, they have only driveways, no bushes, no shrubbery, and in fact, on the ground floor, there's only one or two of the houses that even have a window. Now, the third thing, there's just something in design. All of those houses are facing due south, so the whole front of the building, including the car garage, two-car garage, is going to be baked by the sun. Now, that is the case on Palminook, the street behind Greg Thatch.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
However.
Thank you for your comments.
There, they had trees.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Have no trees blocking.
Our next speaker is Charlene Donamary. Thank you for your comments. Please take your seat. Your, your two minutes is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlene.
I understand. Well, we heard everything that you said. We really did. It took it in. We'll turn it back to the council. If you have questions, we'll bring you back up, okay?
Thank you for your comments. I just want to remind members of the public, you have two minutes to speak. Our next speaker is Charlene Dunamar, and then Irene Dugan.
Good evening, Mayor, mayors, council members, and audience. I am Pinky Bowa. Actually, I'm also opposing that this project you're bringing. I'm living in the Greg Thatch Circle 218, near to that one. But my question is this, when I went to the door-to-door, asked the neighbor, this project coming, they didn't know. They're so upset, they frustrated, "Oh, long time I waiting for elementary school. Oh, our children grown up now going to school." And the callers, "Oh, my God, next, we waiting for my next generations. Now plan it change." "Oh, politicians wanna do what?" I say, "Who politicians?" Okay, my question to guys, I know you really punch, this is my words, I'm sorry. We are power for you. You have no power. We given you power to solve our problems. If community has no problem, why we need you guys? We need to solve our problems. We given you power. We are power for you. You have no power, nothing. So you solve our problems. You listen. You elected by us because we need solve our problems. If not problem, but if we given power, I know how you take power. So I aware my neighbors, they're not happy. I have more than 150 petitioners. They sign these papers. So please listen and give us good school. Even they say, "Oh, long time." They didn't know this project coming. I wanna questions, how you pass this project without any community knows? How you use our power, which you we given you guys? Thank you. Sorry if say anything wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Irene. So Irene Dugan.
Can I give one more question to Mr. Dugan?
We can't cede time to another. Irene, do you want to speak or? No, thank you. So Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, let me turn it back to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to ask a couple of questions that the community members brought up that I hope city staff can help clarify with, for me. For this project, is it consistent with houses in, in the neighborhood? And when I mean consistent, are there any deviations for how close the houses are together or how far apart they are?
The proposed interior side yard setbacks are five feet, which is consistent with the PUD and the underlying zone. And the density is comparable to what is existing in the surrounding neighborhood.
So are, how far apart are the houses from each other?
10 feet with the count, five feet the property line, so a total of 10 feet from house to house.
And is that consistent with houses that I know are south of like Magnolia Circle and the Magnolia Park?
Yes, that's actually a consistent setback citywide with our R1 zone.
And then are there any deviations for driveways in the community?
No.
This is, this is a really tough issue because I hear the community. And, and I was a school board member in Natomas for 20 years, and I can tell you, I had this happen in my community, where a developer came in, owned land, stuck a sign down and said future school site. And as a school board member, we looked at the site and found that a gas line was running underneath it, and it was inferior. We let the community know, but we did not purchase the site because of that. It really puts it in a difficult position when developers or others promise a school and the community buys houses, and that's what you plan on and that's what you see. I am newly elected, so I was not your city council member in 2021 when the school district looked at everything and said they didn't need a school site. And I did reach out to Twin Rivers, ask for what their thought process was, what their communication was to the community. Did they follow the law on notices and outreach? I was told they were. What I'm hearing from you guys is there wasn't. The thing that we can't undo is that the property was, was legally noticed and sold. So there is, there is no backtracking for it to be a school. And, and, and I, and I want to say, I understand. I hear your disappointment as a community for the promises that you were made. This development was submitted in before I was even in office, which puts me, you know, it's a very difficult situation because there's timelines and things that go forward. But I do know that your concerns were brought up at the planning commission. I know there were concerns specifically with Lot 1 and community members and needing to address the privacy. It is, we are in a position in the city that we need housing. There is nothing that is, is deviating from the surrounding neighborhood. It is a awful situation to be living in a community when you feel like what you were promised was not delivered. It really is. I get it. I live in that community in Natomas, that we were, we purchased a house that was supposed to have a school, and it is more housing. So I understand that, but I wanted to make sure, in working with our city staff, that there were no deviations for this project, that there were no inconsistencies or special accommodations given that made this community and this development special to the surrounding area. If there was a way to bring it back to get a school or get community property, I would be there, but this has gone through the legal process and it is privately owned. And it would be considered a taking. Like, we don't have several million city dollars to do that, that taking because this is private. I am supportive of, of more housing. It is a difficult situation, but it was, it was set up before I was here. I would like to have seen things slightly different, but I do support the housing in Magnolia Park, willing to always look at if there are extra things that we can do, whether it's pickleball or the next, because it is a beautiful park, and I have been to that park. So, and I know it is a community treasure, and I will say, while not in your neighborhood, there is a new school opening just on the other side of Elkhorn that will be open August 2024. That is a TK8 that Twin Rivers is planning and will, because of potential safety, I will encourage them to provide busing because there is no safe route over the freeway for neighborhoods and families to get over there. But, you know, I am, I'm willing to open and close the public hearing and move forward.
Is it not one-story homes?
Excuse me. I can't shout out from the audience. I'm sorry. Everyone's had a chance to, to participate and to be heard. Is there a second on the motion? Excuse me, that's not, I'm sorry. It's not the way the public process works. We've had the long planning commission hearing, now council hearing. We've heard from the members of the public.
I thought you were gonna hear Charlene again.
Excuse me, no, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
Sir, no more shouting out. President Gavaski will ask you to leave.
Why not?
Taken by Laloie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, that passes. Thank you. No, ma'am, you had, you had more than two minutes, actually. Yes, you did. I'm sorry. We have to move on, we have to move on to the next item on the agenda. Apologies.
So Mayor, our next item is item 13, which is the City-County Partnership Agreement to Address Homeless Crisis Update, which is an oral request.
Let's wait just a moment, please. Yeah.
While we're preparing for the next presentation, I'd like to remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, please fill out a speaker slip. If you're in chambers, if you're in Zoom, raise your hand when the item starts. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips in the chambers, and the Zoom feature in Zoom will be disabled, and you will have two minutes to address the council. Thank you. Mr. Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you, please. Good evening, mayor and council. I am Mario Lara, Assistant City Manager, Public Safety. The item before you tonight is a six-month progress report regarding the Homeless Services Partnership Agreement with the County of Sacramento that was approved and executed in December of 2022. This evening, I am joined by Siobhan Katari, Deputy County Executive Officer over Social Services, as well as representatives from Sacramento Steps Forwards and Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to assist in presenting this item. Also attending are staff from DCR, Code Enforcement, Police Department, Fire City Attorney's Office, who all play a critical role in addressing homelessness crisis and are here to assist in responding to any questions you may have. The homeless crisis is plaguing many urban centers across the entire nation and it is a problem that exists within a complex legal, political, and socioeconomic environment. City of Sacramento is no exception. Homelessness has been rising and as of the latest point in time count, 67% of the unhoused population in the region are concentrated in the city. Many agencies are involved in addressing homelessness as the crisis demands a multi-jurisdictional and multi-sector approach. The partnership agreement, which is the focus of tonight's discussion, is one tool to help coordinate and streamline the efforts between city and county over a five-year term. It outlines the roles and responsibilities of both agencies as it relates to outreach and engagement, as well as the provision of social services, including shelters and housing. Measure O, the Emergency Shelter and Enforcement Act of 2022, ESEA, was approved by voters within the city and became effective in December of 2022. ESEA creates limited obligations for the city to more effectively address the homelessness crisis and the City-County Partnership Agreement is a key provision in meeting these obligations. Measure O would not go into effect and would not remain in effect without the partnership agreement. Through the partnership agreement, the city and county are working more collaboratively in key areas that include outreach and engagement and the creation of additional shelter capacity to eliminate encampments. Although enforcement and camp management activities are not specifically called out in the partnership agreement, I would like to touch on this briefly as it is one of the necessary responses.
Lotta, can you just speak up just a little bit? It's just hard, it's a little bit hard to hear. I'm not sure if we can turn the volume up or?
Yes, staff, can you turn up the volume, please?
Thank you.
So although enforcement and camp management activities are not specifically called out in the partnership agreement, it is an obligation under the ESEA and I would like to touch on it briefly. Since the beginning of this year, there have been over 8,000 calls for services related to homelessness received by the Department of Community Response. They fall under four main categories. General homeless concerns, over 5,000 calls received, 500 foot within a school or critical infrastructure, about 156 of those. Sidewalk is a main, main call of concern, over 2,000 of those calls. And then we received about 845 self-refers. In addition to that, we receive over 5,000 calls for services related to trash. On a weekly basis, staff prepares heat maps like the one you see here that I have on the overhead, if we can, if we can use the overhead as well, I'd appreciate it. So staff prepares a heat map on a weekly basis and conduct assessments to coordinate and help prioritize where to deploy the limited resources that the city has available to respond to homelessness. The assessment that staff conducts are based not only on the calls for services, but are also based on factors that include the size of an encampment, the public health hazards that include biohazards or fire hazards and the presence of vectors, rodents, and accumulation of trash and non-life essential materials that accumulate within these encampments. Level one is the highest priority assessment and currently, there are, there are 12, at least 12 areas that have received a level one designation. These are the X Street Corridor, Third and R, the 600, 6,000 block and DS Avenue, the 2,000 block on Front Street, the 3,000 block in Marysville Boulevard, Dale and Traction, 29th and C, North B Street, Rio Linda and I-80, Nordwood and Fairbanks, and the open space behind Granite Regional Park and Evergreen Circle. This changes over time, so the level one encampment priority sites changes over time. Since the beginning of the year, contractors have picked up over 17,000 hypodermic needles and over 21,000 cubic yards of trash. In accordance with city council directive, when the sidewalk and critical infrastructure ordinance was approved, voluntary compliance is sought first and gained in most instances. Absent voluntary compliance, a posting providing sufficient notice is made before any enforcement or involuntary camp management activity is carried out. Of the over 8,000 calls for services that were received, 151 calls were referred to PD Impact for Enforcement. Voluntary compliance was obtained in almost all cases. To date, no citations have been issued because of enforcement and camp management activities in response to the 311 calls for services. The focus of enforcement has been on ongoing trash and debris removal with an emphasis on gaining compliance to the city sidewalk and critical infrastructure ordinance, enforcing vehicle code, and enforcing notices of trespass and private and leased properties. Outreach and engagement efforts are conducted five days per week by DCR staff along with contracted workers. The partnership agreement has increased both the capacity and to conduct outreach, as well as the quality and the effectiveness of the outreach efforts. The agreement calls for 10 behavioral health workers to be funded by the county. Eight are currently deployed and two are in active recruitments, two active recruitments are pending. The agreement also calls for 15 engagement workers funded by the managed care plans. An MOU between the county and managed care providers has been executed and hiring and training will be carried out within the next few months. From January 1 through April 30, there have been over 1,300 contacts made by city-county outreach teams, leading to over 800 engagements that have resulted in 44 people being placed in a shelter or safe camping site. Over 400 people were contacted by behavioral health staff, leading to assessments and engagements that resulted in folks being admitted to outpatient programs. 193 people were connected to core outpatient clinic and 50 people were connected to full-service partnership programs within the last, within the first four months of the partnership agreement. City and county staff, along with the Sacramento Steps Forward and Sacramento Cover, collaborated in developing a shared homeless management information system data collection program that went live on May 10. This will improve data gathering and sharing and the goal is to be more efficient in terms of placing individuals into, into, into shelter spaces through the coordinated access system, which I will now turn the presentation over to Deputy County Executive, Siobhan Katari, who will provide some information about our progress regarding shelters and coordinated access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. And I hope you all are doing well, mayor, city council, glad to be here. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for your leadership and thank your city teams who have been working really well alongside our county teams and our partners to unroll some of the activities in the partnership agreement. We're, we're really lucky to have the partnership. So even before, I will say even before the partnership agreement was executed, I know our teams had been working together and I think this just solidified it and encouraged all of us to bring more resources to the table. And we're really happy with some of the results. In addition to what Mario shared about the behavioral health staff, another thing that I would like to share has to do with some of our activity around Safe Stay communities. As part of the partnership agreement, the county has agreed to establish two additional Safe Stay non-congregate community shelters by the end of 2023 and we are on track for doing that. Additionally, by the, within 36 months of execution of the partnership agreement, we had agreed to establish another 200 beds. And as you probably know, the county has purchased a piece of property and warehouse off of Watt Avenue, North Watt in North Highlands, and we are working on planning that out. In addition, the governor made an announcement about 350 tiny homes that would come to Sacramento as a result of the city and county working together to establish these homes. So our teams have been working alongside the state and alongside our partners to find sites for those homes and start to work on plans to develop those. In addition, I just wanted to mention, and I'm gonna skip a couple of bullets, but we run 10, we were running 10 core wellness centers for behavioral health and this is our new model of delivering behavioral health services in the county. It's an opportunity for neighborhood-based community wellness centers where folks could drop in, receive services, get assessments as a way to create more access points to care, so we don't create a bottleneck to those services. As a result of the partnership agreement, we agreed to add one additional site in the city and that site is going to be operated by our partner, Hope Cooperative, and is scheduled to go live on Broadway this summer around July is what we're anticipating still. And so I wanted to turn it over first to LaShel Dozier from SHRA for the Affordable Housing Plan, and then we will hear about Coordinated Access System from SSF as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. LaShel Dozier, Executive Director at SHRA. I wanted to just give an update in terms of where we are with the Affordable Housing Plan. As you know, part of the partnership agreement does require that within six months, we would sit down and jointly work on an Affordable Housing Plan. The goals of that plan is really to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units that we have in production, as well as look at rehousing efforts to get homeless individuals off the streets and out of shelters. So we're starting, we've been doing quite a bit of work on this over the past few months. SHRA did hire a consultant, ESA, that has a lot of background and experience working with affordable housing, community development. In addition, the internal stakeholders have been meeting, we've had several meetings to really discuss what the scope of the Affordable Housing Plan should look like. So going forward in terms of looking at the schedule and the timeline, in June, we really want to take the time to do the outreach to the community stakeholders and really come forward with an outline of a draft, but we want to hear from them. We want to hear their input before we start to really circulate what a draft would look like. With that being said, in July, we want to come back to our governing boards, back to the city and to the county with a draft and receive your comments and direction. In addition to that, we also want to make sure that we invite and have lots of opportunity at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission for members of the public who also want to make comments and then finally finalize the plan towards the end of this summer or the beginning of fall. So that is really kind of the overview in terms of the timeline and where we are with the Affordable Housing Plan and I'm available for any questions. If not, I will turn it on over to the next speaker.
Thank you. I think let's hear the entire presentation and then, then we can open it up. Thank you.
We have Sacramento Steps.
Sacramento Steps Forward.
Hello, good evening. My name is Peter Bell, I'm with Sacramento Steps Forward. I am the Planning Director and responsible for implementing the coordinated access system here locally. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information around timeline, as well as some of the shelter resources that are currently available through coordinated access. So right now, there's about 600 shelter beds that are being coordinated through coordinated access with an additional 400 beds that we're projecting that will be online by the end of July, which will bring us to about 1,016 beds in total. By the end of the year, we do hope to be closer to about 1,600 total shelter beds that would be coordinated through this process. So this process does work as sort of a central access point through 211. So folks can call 211, press eight and be connected to the housing crisis line. That line does do complete assessments for folks over the phone, but that is not the only way that folks can connect to shelter. So other outreach teams, access points within the community are also trained on how to complete these same assessments and are able to connect folks to shelter in the same, same way. In total, there will probably be about 740 beds that will not go through this process due to just the nature of either their funding or the specific populations that they serve. I'd like to just take a moment to share a little bit of some of the data that's coming out of this system so far. So putting there on the viewfinder, so this is the Q1 report, so for the first quarter of this year, there was about 5,700 calls that came to the housing crisis line. 70% of those callers were connected to other, maybe non-necessarily homeless resources in that moment. About 1,700 of those calls were actually folks who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. The one thing I want to say about this housing crisis line is that it's not just about shelter coordination, while that is a really important piece of it, it is also about connecting to outreach and it's also about connecting to housing problem solving or financial assistance that is able to either divert someone or prevent them from experiencing homelessness. So you can see in the first quarter, there was about 1,000 referrals to different crisis resources that includes emergency shelter, problem solving sites, and the coordinated access navigators. In total, there was about 826 successful outcomes in this first quarter. 322 households enrolled in an emergency shelter that were participating through the coordinated access system and 504 households actually exited or diverted from homelessness, either through the assistance of the financial assistance I mentioned, or through some 211 problem solving that happened on the call. So just on that note, just pointing to a couple metrics here as well, just around shelter utilization. So programs that were participating through this process had a 93% utilization rate, which means that most beds were not sitting empty for very long. This was an improvement on the same shelters that were participating with this process the year prior. And so that's an important note. The other thing I just want to say around the problem solving assistance is that this is a really vital resource when we talk about the folks who are entering into our homelessness system versus those who are exiting. We know that there are a large number of folks who continue to come into homelessness on a, on a daily basis. So this assistance is really tailored to support those folks who are at risk of eviction or in need of additional financial assistance to quickly lease up. So there was 190 households who were supported in this first quarter with the average amount being about $2,900. In total, about $550,000 were spent to support families and individuals in either acquiring or maintaining permanent housing. What I like to note about that too is about 95% of those clients have remained housed six months after that assistance was given. Again, happy to answer any additional questions that folks may have.
Yeah, do, do we have the PowerPoint or whatever you were referring to? I think if you could get it to the clerk, maybe we could get some copies made, please, because this may be a long discussion and if all the members could please have copies of the Steps Forward presentation, that would be, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes staff presentation on the progress report for the partnership agreement. I would like to thank my colleagues at the various agencies, the county, SHRA, SSF, for being here, as well as the city team. We are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lotta and Ms. Katari and, and Ms. Dozier and Mr. Bell, I think it is, for your presentation. So we have 18 speakers, we want to hear from the public. I know members are gonna want to obviously weigh in and Rick Jennings asked to go first, which I will do, but I think what I want to do here, if it's okay, members, is I want to add a little bit to the presentation. I may ask the city manager to add a component to the presentation as well. Let's hear from the public, turn it over to Rick right after that, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Is that okay? Okay. So I want to, I want to describe to the public here as much as possible, reflect what the conversations are day to day, behind the scenes, not only within the city, but with our county partners as well, so that you understand that this isn't just a matter of numbers, but it's actually a very complex nuanced problem and approach and what some of the, some of the good news is, but also to be honest about what some of the continuing challenges are here. Excuse me, I, I, I'm gonna speak and I'd ask for your courtesy, I'll give the same to you, okay? Thank you. First of all, I want to add on to what Siobhan Katari, I think, said, if at least paraphrase it, to say that the, the relationship in terms of the communication, the collaborative spirit between the city and county is the best that I have experienced in my years as mayor. It is. We, when we're arguing, we're arguing differently now. We're arguing in the room together, we are, and we're problem solving in real time. And the partnership agreement itself, I'm not sure that the presentation did, in my humble opinion, enough justice to how significant it really is, because it is a foundation humble opinion, enough justice to how significant it really is, because it is a foundation, potentially, for something great, and certainly greater. Of course, it is merely a piece of paper, and it all depends on how it is implemented. But here's why it is profound, and I'm not sure we talk enough about this among colleagues and among the public. The city and county have always had relationships, but I don't think, I might disagree with some who say that prior to the partnership agreement, that there was a genuine partnership, because I don't think there was. I think that there was a lot of separate efforts, important efforts, but certainly frustration in the city, maybe frustration in the county as well. Frustration in the city mostly around the fact that two-thirds of the problem largely resides within the city, and the county has a large jurisdiction to serve in addition to the city, and we felt a real disconnect and a frustration about not just whether we're getting our fair share of resources, but whether or not there was an urgency in terms of the way we, together, handled the problem. And you know what we've been through over the last six years? We have tried everything. We've built more congregate shelter and leased more motels long term, and you know, we started at less than 100 beds when I became mayor, and now to... We're now up to 1,100 beds, we're now up to 1,100 beds every night. Sacramento Steps Forward tells us that between the city and county together since 2017, and of course, SHRA's been a big part of this as well, we collectively have gotten over 17,000 people from unsheltered status to housed. And yet, the problem is worse. But until we had some hard times together, the city and county mostly, and some controversy, until we came together and forged this partnership agreement, I don't really think we were working together. I think we now are, and I think it presents tremendous amount of hope. And I want to commend the county beyond the partnership agreement, and I think, you know, some changes in executive leadership, frankly, I'm being honest about it, make a real difference. The county now is leaning in like at least I've not seen before, and you know, Ms. Katari goes through some of the list, and it's an impressive list in terms of what's coming. I mean, Watt Avenue, I know, you know, a number of permanent supportive housing projects when you're Cal Expo, the core centers throughout, the different approach to mental health, Cal AIM, all of that work. And so it is a better time. And on top of that, we have several near-term opportunities that we are collectively taking advantage of. We are looking, the governor, very generous, we push very hard for this, but our city and county are getting the most number of manufactured homes in any other city or county in the state, including Los Angeles, 350 out of the base of 1,200. Really, really good news. The challenge and the problem is this, and now I'm going to shift a little bit, and it's not criticism, it's observation, and it speaks to our collective work together, where there will continue to be some creative tension, but as the questions of enforcement, for example, come on up, I think it's really important that all my colleagues in the public know this, that we've got several key sites now. We've got a key site in South Sacramento, we've got Cal Expo. It is going to take, for a variety of reasons, there's the state public contract code, there's the city and county process, there's a whole host of things, it is going to take until late '23 or early '24, in all probability, to get those 350 manufactured homes in the ground with people in them. And to the members of the public and to me, and I think to many of us, that's just not okay. We can only control what we can control, but that's not okay. So we're working hard, we're meeting and talking about how we can get beds up faster for two reasons. Number one, we get beds up faster, we're able to then help more people off the streets, obviously. But there's a second reason, and it relates to, I know what is going to be at least a subtopic here this evening, and that is that whether it's Measure O, Martin v. Boise, common sense, we cannot break up tent encampments, at least in a large sense, unless and until we have something dignified...
You are sleeping people, though.
Excuse me? Unless we have something dignified to offer people. Now, there are some except, there, excuse me, you will not interrupt me, or else you're going to leave.
Actual housing, I think that's what you mean.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's do the warning here. We're not going to have this, okay? We're going to stay calm, but we're going to, we're going to have this.
Point of order. I just want to remind members of the public, this meeting is being video streamed, it can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found in the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the start of each item, and each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. So if you're in chambers, I'd encourage you to fill out a speaker slip now, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer requests that a person disrupt, or cease disruptive conduct, if not immediately stop. The presiding officer will ask the person to leave the council meeting. I just want to remind you, a cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are available from the clerk.
I'm going to get to the key point here, and then we're going to turn it over to the public. Since we cannot, housing is the answer. You heard Director Dozier. By the way, we've had more affordable housing starts in this city, you know, including Marisol Village than ever before in this city. Now, it's not enough, but we have been more aggressive about affordable housing than any time in recent history. However, however, the emergency need is for temporary or transitional housing so that we can get people out of encampments, out of their cars, into a better place, and at least begin that process of getting into housing. Here is the challenge. Since we cannot use the conventional process to get those 350 tiny homes or manufactured homes up until probably late '23 or early '24, and that's not okay for any of us, we have several options, and I'm going to tell you the options that we've talked about. And by the way, this is directly linked to the question of how we humanely enforce, at least on the tent encampments, how we humanely enforce. But here are the options. One, and I've talked to the city manager about this, and so none of this is, we're working hand in glove on this in a very, very positive way. Number one, I'm proposing tonight that, working with the county, and we've already talked about how to do that, that we allow up to 60 tents out at Miller Park. That's not housing. That's not housing, and that's not everything. But we allow up to 60 tents at, excuse me, I'm going to finish.
Did you already do that?
Point of order. I don't, I don't, to Nikki, please, you need to read the warning one time to her, because she is interrupting.
Thank you. I'd like to remind, and I believe we were talking about Nikki, but to the audience, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You would be in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure, and if you continue, I will order you to leave the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Nikki heard it. Here are the five options. Miller Park, we're recommending tonight that we allow 60 tents in addition to the 15 or 17 or so trailers that are already out there as a way to help people in a more organized fashion with county services, but in a more, in a more organized place. Secondly, we are recommending that we add 25, but it's really 35 beds, to the North Area Science Center. It's, the capacity's 50, there's usually slack of about 10 beds. We add 25, that's 35 additional beds. That gets us to, that gets us to at least 100. The South SAC project, I'm not at liberty to identify the site at this point, we've really looked hard at how we might be able to get a faster start out there. I'm not sure that's the best option in the short run, I say reluctantly. The county has the Safe Stay Project, which it's opening, powered in and flooring. If there is any room for city homeless, unsheltered people, we want to at least talk about that, because every 10 beds is an additional 10 beds. And finally, and I've talked to Director Dozier about this today, and we've had conversations with the county, whether it's the Vagabond Hotel, motel, or another motel, we need 100 beds. We need 100 beds, and we need them quickly. And together collectively, we ought to be able to figure out a way to do it. Now, I know that can be expensive, but maybe we talk about the levels and intensity of the services to try to bring down the cost. We talk about how we might cost share, but in my opinion, we need to get, and I've said this privately, so that's what I'm saying, I want to reflect publicly what I've said privately, we need 200 additional units and/or beds this summer, because if we have those 200 additional, we can then begin to create, at least in selected corridors, a cleaner and safer city, and do so in a humane way, which is always, this community's polarized around, you know, services, housing versus enforcement. For me, I've been consistent, whether you like it or not, and I guess neither side likes it. To me, I'm okay with saying you cannot live out on the street, you cannot live out on the street. But, but it's only okay to move somebody if, in fact, we have something to offer them. Now, here are the exceptions, here are a couple of exceptions. Please, I'm going to finish, I don't care, I'm going to finish. The sidewalk ordinance, the sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure, private property, but even enforcing those are not great solutions because you're not, you know, moving somebody everywhere. And also enforcing the criminal law when it comes to drug sales or trafficking, or the abuse of people who are living out on the streets, okay? So we can talk a lot about, and members will talk tonight about their frustrations in their districts and all that, but Mr. Lada must go by some set of priorities and some heat map. Last thing, and this is maybe a point of contention with the county or maybe not, and I know you have an elected sheriff who we all like and respect a lot, but I want to know, and I know my colleagues want to know, what is the status, what is the status of Parkway Enforcement? I know Ms. Talamontes, I didn't mean to, she's going to ask that as well. What is the status of Parkway Enforcement? And where are those people going? Because if they're coming into our city in our downtown, or the Thomas, or anywhere else in this city, they're making the problem worse, our problem worse. And so that isn't partnership, if that's what's happening. I'm not accusing, I'm asking. And I think we need to have an honest conversation about that, because we have to account for everybody here. Mr. Chan, last thing. Mr. City Manager, I'd like you to describe your Tuesday morning meetings and what happens when it comes to triage around the sidewalk ordinance, and when it comes to critical infrastructure and private property and the thousands of calls that are coming in.
I think that to follow on the presentation from Mr. Lara, two words, just frustration from the public about the lack of perceived process and inundation. So we hit on it earlier, there was about 8,000 calls that we take in regarding homeless encampments since the beginning of this year. And, you know, the criteria that we look at, there's four areas that we look at where we will have some enforcement action based on Boise v. Martin, based on where this council wants to be, in terms of touches before any enforcement action is taken, and those, the mayor hit on those, that's critical, those that violate our critical infrastructure ordinance, private property, the sidewalk ordinance, and also the, what I call the safe routes to school for kids to walk. And in those instances, every Tuesday, we get together with a group from Department of Community Response, the Code Enforcement, police, fire, park rangers, the city attorney's office, and my office, the city manager's office. And based on the criteria that Mr. Lara shared, that flexes every single week. So while there are calls that continue to come in for impacts within our city, we simply do not have the resources to address them in the way that most people would like to see. And that's where this city-county partnership agreement is really critical, because we do have partners in the county. I know that it's been strained in the past. We are absolutely on a better path, but we need to do more. And we have these potential beds coming online in the next, you know, six months to a year that will give us that additional capacity, so as we take on these enforcement efforts, there will be places for people to go. So I don't know if you wanted me to add any more to that, Mayor, but...
No, I just want a little bit about the process of how you triage. Okay. Now, the presentation, including my presentation, is completed. Let's hear from the public, and then I'm going to turn it over to the council for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I currently have 23 speakers signed up. The first one is Ryan Masano, Jeff Karen, Crystal Sanchez. And I do want to remind members of the audience that...
I want to remind that we should...
I need to remind members of the audience, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings. We need...
If you're not going to take care when I go...
Madam Clerk, please read the announcement of disruption of the city council.
Thank you. Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the Council Rules of Procedure.
Madam Clerk, we're going to recess for a couple minutes. We're going to recess for a couple minutes. Recess is for 10 minutes at 2:40.
In your chamber, they're doing a Nazi so hard. Engaging conduct that disturbs the orderly conduct of the meeting and are in violation of the Council Rules of Procedure, Chapter 5.
Meet me in the room. Thank you, staff.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we'll be recessing again until 6:42. We'll be back at 6:42. 7:02 PM, Madam Clerk, members of the public have continued to engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting and are in violation of Council Rules of Procedure, Chapter 5. Therefore, we will take a brief recess to clear the chambers. City Manager, instruct the sergeant-at-arms to clear the chambers. City Clerk, establish the portal to allow public right to testify and participate via Zoom. We are in recess until cleared the chambers. Thank you.
Great job of de-escalating that.
Thank you very much. The city council is back in session. The public business will resume. Members, what we are going to do now is take public testimony for anyone who wants to call in on the publicly accessible Zoom function. Given that this is, again, relatively new, at least for this period of time, what we'll do is we'll allow people who have not yet called in to come in for the next 10 minutes, okay? For the next 10 minutes, you can add in. We'll take those who are already, have signed up to speak, and anybody who signs up over the next 10 minutes. We'll hear from the public, and we'll turn it over to the members of the city council, all right? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Mike Snell. Mike Snell, if you'll unmute.
I'd like to pass at this time, sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
All right. Well... Well, I guess I'll make, make a comment on this item and then come back later to talk about all this decorum nonsense that's going on. Mr. Mayor, you made a, you noted that the city is up to 100 and, sorry, 1,100 shelter beds at this point, which is not a bad number, but last year's point in time count, which unfortunately does cover the whole county, but that was at 9,278 people. Now, 9,278 is a much larger number than 1,100, which means that the city and county do not have adequate beds and spaces and shelter places to offer to people, which means that because of Martin v. Boise, they are not supposed to be sweeping encampments. Period. End of story. Anything that you guys are doing to try and justify it to yourself and make an exception to that is wrong. If you don't change your behavior, someone's going to sue you and the courts are going to make you change your behavior. It is unacceptable, and don't try and tell me you're not still sweeping people because people are still getting swept. I know you, the city at one point during this meeting was bragging that they had issued zero citations, but the county in a presentation today said that they had issued 369 citations as well as 112 misdemeanor and 43 felony arrests made. All of this is in violation of Martin v. Boise. Measure O itself is inherently in violation of Martin v. Boise because it calls for you to displace people and break up encampments without caring if you have a shelter for them. It is unacceptable to do any sweeps until there is enough space for every unhoused person in the county. And it's just sickening that you're still displacing people despite that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Barry Boyd. Mr. Boyd, if you'll unmute.
Thank you and good afternoon. Just a quick question, just for clarity, is the public comment now just for this agenda item or is this the, for public comment as well?
We are on item 13.
Just, just for clarity, with that said, I'll hold my comments to public comment, and I'm glad to see everybody there at the dais is fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is F. Mata.
I am speaking on the matter. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So my name's Francine Mata, I'm with the Sacramento Low Rider Commission. We advocated and have repealed the no cruising ordinance authored AB 436, contribute to ACR 176 and Miller Park's environmental well-being, along with speaking regarding the inhumane living conditions for the unhoused citizens of Sacramento. During COVID, health feeds up to four times a month and currently participate at least twice a month. We hold over 100 community events in our city contributing to economic growth development and active in the youth community. Tents do not work. One person passed away and several people fell ill this past year at Miller Park. We had a walkthrough of Miller Park as we were displaced with Mr. Lada. Our low rider community was displaced, and that's how we organized the Low Rider Commission. During the walkthrough, the SLC strongly advocated to transfer and shelter to the tree-lined, unused, and evenly paved section of Miller Park. The street is just past the park and enhanced to the left. The road offers tree shelter from the cold, wet, and hot weather elements. The SLC understands the city has more mobile trailers and would be placing them, but now hearing their tents. We are aware, and the temporary schedule, we've been telling that it would be only for 30 days. Our recommendation is to place the trailers on the tree-lined side of the road at Miller Park. Our request still remains and asks that we be included, notified to offer assistance, expertise in these community matters, especially regarding parks that impact us and has always built community partnerships. We oppose the tents being put on Miller Park. This is an injustice to our community and the unhoused, and we ask that you reconsider this and let us in on this decision-making. If you can please keep our community aware of these decisions and give the unhoused the proper services that they truly need.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon B. Keon B., if you'll unmute. Keon B., will you unmute? I'll move to the next person, Amelia Kelly.
I actually was not quite ready yet, so I'll come back when I...
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
So I'm out here outside City Hall chambers where most people are scattered and y'all are having this, continuing this meeting in, like in an empty chamber with nobody allowed to come back in. And not only is that supremely disrespectful, especially after sending in two dozen officers to essentially allow for five white, white supremacists and anti-Semites to shut down the meeting because of, by their presence, by their very presence, to use it as a platform, but you also are now violating like dozens of people's First Amendment rights to participate in the public meeting process. This, this meeting should be canceled outright, or you all should be on Zoom meeting yourselves and have made appropriate accommodations for other members of the public to participate. What about members who are, like, who don't have reliable internet access or who don't have charged phones? What about people who can't speak via Zoom, who need ASL interpretations or maybe deaf? What accommodations are you providing for them? How is this, the public, public meeting allowed to continue when you are literally shutting out everybody from that because of five races? It's profoundly, it's not just disrespectful, it's a violation of our basic rights. And a lot, like, there were dozens of people who were ready to speak on homeless issues. I was ready to speak on this issue and other issues, but this is, like, you have allowed this to escalate into a position where that issue is completely drowned out. And I can't help but wonder, was that the point? Was that, like, was that the reason to actually do that? I have so many things I want to actually, like, comment on this, but frankly, I'm just outraged at the treatment of this. And I know many people who are sitting in the chambers who were here for a completely different issue are completely outraged. Like, if you were trying to prove that we do not have...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Herman Barahona.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. It is unfortunate what keeps happening with people who come here to disrupt the democratic process, and I commend you for staying cool in the middle of this mess. I'm with the Sacramento Environmental Justice Coalition. What I wanted to go, to stay here in public is that the Sacramento EJC paired up with Amurtel and the Footprint Project to bring solar energy to Camp Resolution so they can have some electricity and some first state electricity that provides enough for a fan and a little bit of relief in the middle of the camp. I think there's an opportunity here to begin to duplicate these camps in a way that the city and the county can really get organized to provide some immediate shelter to beat all these issues that we're having here in the streets. I recommend to the City Council to consider looking at this with these regional professionals. Amurtel is based out of India, and the Footprint Project is based out of the state of Louisiana, and they're willing to loan us all the equipment to come bring electricity to Camp Resolution. So I ask for you to have a conversation with us and figure out a way that we can duplicate these efforts so we can bring dignity to this humanitarian crisis that we're facing across the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Giovanna Abruska. Please proceed.
Please proceed. Okay. So my name is Giovanna Abrusese. I am a member of the Brazilian Center that is located in Clara Studio for Performing Arts. On April 26, Sarah and I was verbally assaulted and physically assaulted by a man that had his keys three inches away from our faces. I submitted an incident report to the Executive Director, Megan, and the Board of Director, Gina. I let them know that I am a victim of domestic violence, and what happened to me at the Clara parking lot made me relive my trauma at that time. I felt dehumanized by both of them. I let them know I would feel safer with parking lot lights and to open up our bathroom. I was told no. With no results, the man continues to park on the side of the Brazilian Center, provoking me and my children. The city needs to take a look at what's going on at Clara Studios. There is discrimination. We are treated with no equality. There's also exclusion, and this is taxpayers' money that's funding Clara. And the city of Sacramento is empowering Clara to treat the community like they have been treating us. I am urging Katie Venezuela to take a look at the safety issues and discrimination of people of color and Latinos at the Clara Studio. I went to Kevin McCarty's office and spoke with Erica Costa, and she said there is not much she can do because she already spoke with Megan, and Megan told her she will not unlock the bathrooms to the Brazilian Center. The community should feel safer and in and out of Clara Studios, the bathrooms have been closed for over eight years. We need the key and we need to have an opportunity to have a fundraiser to fix the bathroom and not it to be used as a personal storage for Megan. Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Amelia Kelly.
Hi there. I just had a question for the council.
Please proceed.
As a former, as somebody who was born in Sacramento County and lived most of her life in Sacramento, I have to ask, at what point in time do you look at yourselves in the mirror and say, I am a bad leader, I am a bad representative of my community because I still take a paycheck while thousands of my fellow citizens do not have a home and I won't build them one? So at one point, do you look in the mirror and say, I should be ashamed of myself? I'm done with my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is F. Mata. F. Mata, I believe you've already spoken, correct?
Yes, sorry, it just went back on, sorry.
Thank you. Evan Minton. Evan Minton, if you'll unmute.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is Evan Minton. I'm on the Board of the Midtown Neighborhood Association, and I'm a D4 resident. Before I get to my comments, I just want to let you know that I was, let folks know I was in chambers, and I'm, I'm so sorry and so disappointed that there was such hate in the chambers tonight. That's something that our council and the public should never have to face, and I'm just so sorry that, that folks are having to face that right now. It's not right. Each of you received a joint letter signed by the Stonewall Democrats, the Sacramento County Young Democrats, Fem Dems, the ACLU, the Sacramento LGBT Center, Organized SAC, and the Midtown Neighborhood Association. And I want to convey the contents of that letter to impact and be included in the conversation that you'll be having tonight. First, we want to say thank you to the council for recognizing that the status quo is unacceptable. And the status quo is that our unhoused neighbors are alternatively being frozen to death or baked to death on our sidewalks each season. And we want to applaud the city's commitment to keeping the Auburn Boulevard Respite Center open 24/7. This is a wonderful step in the right direction. However, this single location is not nearly enough, so we want to ask that the surplus budget dollars go to keeping respite centers open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, citywide, and that we take measures, including those listed in the letter, to increase the likelihood that the respite centers will be used. And we are also advocating for surplus budget dollars to be directed to affordable housing for low and very low-income Sacramentoans, and that'll both help young professionals live closer to their jobs, it will serve to decrease pollution and climate change, and also stem the rising, the rise of homelessness. So again, thank you for listening to my comments, and my heart goes out to all of you. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Cory Copeland.
Hi, Cory Copeland, District 4 resident. I do want to echo what I think it was Keon B. said, which is that the way that the chamber was shut down does feel like it would be borderline a Brown Act violation, just to blanket close everyone out after noticing a public meeting. But I understand perhaps there are, you know, maybe people felt unsafe, but it does feel like you could have just kicked the five Nazis out to me, and it would have resolved things, made everyone feel safe. But on that side, I did want to speak on progress that you all are making here and say that it feels fairly inadequate to, to the needs. Despite that, though, I do want to say that as someone who lives extremely close to the Miller Park site, I, I'm happy with you expanding it. Keep moving forward on that. I realize some other callers in my area were less happy about that, but we need spaces and frequently, like, even tents that I know you won't sweep is worth something to me because everywhere else you seem to be willing to let people get pushed around and have their stuff taken. So yeah, keep making a lot more progress on that and also hopefully on actual housing so that when people get into those tents, they're not just stuck there with nowhere to go. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Crystal Sanchez.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm requesting that you guys put this meeting off and allow public comment for a later time. I was just in chambers with my daughter and, you know, a handful of unhoused folks who really wanted to speak on this topic because it does directly impact them, and their voices are not at this table. And so I'm asking that you guys, the council, please, please, please put this off long enough for the public comment to actually be able to come in in the way that it needs to. These folks don't have phones to contact you in the way that they need to. And also, super disappointed, my daughter has been coming to council with me since she was two years old. This was her first time she really wanted to speak. She had written her speech, and it was shut down. She was scared to death. This is absolutely inappropriate, and I think we need to figure out something to, you know, make this work a little better. And again, please put any decisions or any further conversation on this topic aside until we can really have a conversation where impacted voices are on the tables. Again, even in your partnership, there is no impacted voices, so please consider that, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is APTP Healing Justice.
Hey, y'all, this is Carly. I'm a resident of District 2, and I am incredibly disappointed that you guys have actively excluded the voices of the impacted people by shutting this meeting down rather than simply removing the white supremacists. You're, you're going against people's First Amendment rights because you would rather protect white supremacy, and that is ridiculous. It's absurd. Another thing that's absurd is looking to expand the Miller Park thing because y'all are paying $4,000 per person per month, and for that amount of money, you could pay a person's rent, you could pay their utilities, you could pay for their food, you could pay for their medical care, you could pay for their premiums. So I don't understand why putting a tent on hot asphalt is better than spending that money on actually housing people. It's, again, it's absurd. And, and at Miller Park, they're not even providing water, they're having people drink from a hose, and you're paying $4,000 per person per month to make them drink from a hose. That is inhumane. It's also not safe because there's all kinds of, like, chemicals and shit that they'll get from drinking from a hose. So it just, you guys are ridiculous. It's clear that you don't have any interest in actually solving homelessness. We have been coming to you for years and years and years before you, Darrell, joined the council. Before, you've been here for seven years, you haven't done shit. Homelessness has just absolutely exploded, and for every person that exits homelessness, new people enter. So what are you doing? What are you doing to prevent that? You need to take action. Stop it with...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Decarcerate Sacramento. Decarcerate Sacramento.
Thank you. I actually hate that I can't change the name on my Zoom when I come on. And I also hate that we started this presentation with enforcement, criminalization, and sweeps, and how many of you guys have done this here? It's kind of shameful. And it kills me that y'all can talk so nonchalantly about harm and trauma. That is some shit that y'all are so disconnected from. It can be displayed by the lack of investment into basic needs and the, and the celebration of a private partner, a private-public partnership to be able to continue to sweep and skirt Martin v. Boise. a private-public partnership to be able to continue to sweep and skirt mightn't be Boise. It's so hard to be doing outside, you should actually give us more time. It seems like an investment into us and compassion is the only way to stop homelessness and harm and, and, and all caused by the criminalization and sweeps. You won't be able to use your coordinated access system without services while kicking people up and down the street every few weeks. Let's talk about Holly at Camp Resolution. She speaks to the lack of services, but mostly to the disability justice and how inaccessible your services are for people who need permanent supportive services, let alone mental health, substance use, food access, workforce development, you know, for all different able-bodied types, not just the ones that you trying to just kick back out into work. I heard a couple of stats today, the screen things to me. DCR and the Hot Teams see 1,400 people in three months, while organizations like Harm Reduction Services, staff with only three people see 400 people per week. And since three is the theme, I think I'll also add that I learned today that for every one person y'all exit from homelessness, three enter it in Sacramento County. Why were these numbers not said to y'all out loud? We need safe camping sites all over Sacramento. We need dignified shelters that we, because we know housing will take years to build, and we need an unto sweeps. And these are just the Band-Aids, right? Because the cause of homelessness is bigger than you can even see or try to understand. When you give the experts only two minutes and don't have spaces that allow for you to hear from your most vulnerable, especially those unhoused. I mean, City Hall still has its can't-sit-lie rules outside, and as always, just do fucking better.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Monica Madrid.
Hi, my name is Monica Madrid. I'm out here supporting everything Crystal Sanchez said. I think we need to hear from the directly affected people that are unhoused. But I do want to say one solution to homelessness that a lot of the council keeps forgetting is keeping people home. We're, we have this tenant anti-harassment policy that's getting held up in the Law and Legislation Committee because council members are saying tenants need to educate themselves. There's council members saying harassment's not happening when it's, it's happening to black and brown people in their districts. But instead of, instead of, I invite Councilmember Garrett, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Kaplan to come door knocking with me in South Sacramento and talk to the black and brown tenants that are getting harassed and find out what's going on and find a solution. Calling people, keeping people home, like keeping people housed is a great solution to housing instead of evicting people and putting them out on the streets. Because right now, what the council is doing is just listening to the Realtors and Apartment Association, letting people get evicted, putting them out on the streets. Tenant Protection Program says they're only open till emergencies only. The mayor's refusing to meet with us. They're not emailing us back when we're requesting to meet. So I'm really hoping that you guys can really work with us and pass this tenant anti-harassment ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. I have three more speakers, and next is Joe. Joe, if you'll unmute.
All right. Hello, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Joe Moreno. I'm a board member of the Sacramento Order Commission, and I just want to strongly suggest and oppose that the location of the 60 cents, 60 tents to be placed at Miller Park be relocated or reconsidered. I would like to request a meeting to further discuss this location and table it for another time that we have more time to speak and let our voices be heard. And this location of Miller Park, it means a lot to a huge community that frequents that park. And with the unhoused of 60 tents being there, it's, it just don't mix. So please reconsider this location and table it for another time where you could hear a lot more voices that have much more concern with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Lucian Vinuti. Lucian Vinuti, if you'll unmute. Looks like they put their hand down. Olivia Fonseca, if you'll unmute. Olivia, if you'll unmute. Mayor, it appears I have no more speakers.
All right, and that was 20 minutes since we began the public testimony. For the record, over 20 minutes, I believe, and so people have had an opportunity, I think, to, to, to sign up even after the public testimony began. So let's turn it over to the city council now and begin a public discussion. There's no vote tonight, but this is very important for the city and for the county leadership and our housing authority to, to take in and to, to engage in a conversation. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by saying that I want to commend the mayor, city manager, county supervisors, members of the four-by-two, the city and county staff, Sacramento Steps Forward, SHRA, and other partners that I can't list tonight, but I will list in the future. But I just want to commend them for the incredible work that they have put into the city-county partnership that we have in front of us. I think we all recognize the severity of the current situation and want to ensure that we are focused on what the city is responsible for doing in support of the county's efforts, also what the city needs to do on its own. To the mayor, city manager, and my colleagues, I believe that because of the urgency of this issue, a workshop of the council is needed and should take place before June the 30th. I have some ideas about what the agenda should include, but not be limited to. Focus area number one, defining the city's role moving forward. What is our plan as informed by the city-county partnership agreement and Measure O? Focus area number two, what is the future of the Department of Community Response? How does DCR fit into our public safety delivery system as well as our plan to address our unhoused population moving forward? Focus area number three, a discussion on the implementation of the city's enforcement of issues regarding the unhoused and the allocation of resources for an enforcement strategy. Subject matter experts for this workshop should include, what are the impacts of the Boise decision on our plan? A discussion of our current policies and where they fit into our current plan, including sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure ordinance, the fact that our parks close at sunset, the enforcement aspects of the voter-approved Measure O, and how anti-camping ordinance works moving forward, as well as protecting those with private property. I think it's really, really important that we provide a session where those whose voices weren't heard tonight can be heard at that workshop. And so with that, I'm, I'm asking the council, I'm asking the city manager, I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking my colleagues to prioritize a workshop where everybody's voice can be heard, and we can also then also hear from the public's voice, and we can strategize together.
First of all, I think it's a fine suggestion. I think we can organize such a workshop. I mean, the more that we talk about this, this is a mini-workshop tonight, not a complete one, but a mini-workshop. The more that we can talk about this in a comprehensive fashion, I, I, I think the better. Obviously, there's a lot of public emotion around these sets of issues, so we need to make sure that we can have a real discussion with the public and amongst ourselves. But I think that's, that's a fine idea. And I'm just going to fill in a little bit because, you know, the questions you're asking around enforcement or what are the legal, what are the legal parameters? But then also, as the city manager alluded to, I think, earlier in the evening, seems so long ago, we've forgotten, that they are besieged by thousands of calls, and there is in fact a priority list out of necessity. Now, maybe the council rightfully wants to weigh in on what those priorities maybe should be. And then to define what meaningful enforcement means and whether, and what kind of enforcement is effective. Because I've said this many times to, not to you, Councilmember Jennings, but to some members of the public, some members of the business community, and I've said, frustration is not a substitute for sound policy. So in other words, if we're going to enforce, the question is, bless you, the question is to where? And, and, and what is the impact on the human being, on the individual, but also on the community, the neighborhoods, the adjoining neighborhoods? And so that's fine. I think we should have that discussion and, and have it in a, in a really, in a smart and, and calm way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have a few questions, and I'm going to start off by saying, my chief of staff attended the County Board of Supervisors meeting earlier today, and I know that there was a really lengthy PowerPoint that was presented there, but not here. And so I was wondering if we, the city, can receive the same information so that we're on the same page. And I know that there was a lot of useful information, but I think it would be good for us as council members to also see and hear from the county. So I don't know if city manager Mario or county someone can help me answer that question as to why we didn't receive the same presentation.
Siobhan Katari, Deputy County Executive. So our Board of Supervisors had asked for a more in-depth workshop on, similar to what Councilmember Jennings asked for, more in-depth workshop on the county's efforts inclusive of the partnership agreement. So that's what we provided today. We are more than happy, and it's posted online, more than happy to come here and give a fuller workshop. For the purpose of this presentation, we were just asked to really speak to the partnership agreement, but happy to work with Assistant City Manager Laura to bring it back if that's the council's wishes. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that would be wonderful, and I think that that would tie in well with Councilmember Jennings' request on a broader workshop to fully understand all aspects of it. And my next question is, we've seen encampments cleared in regional parks, specifically in Discovery Park and along the American River, conducted without placement of people into housing. This has resulted in unhoused people moving into the nearest neighborhoods, which includes District 2 and District 3. And the effect to move people into parks, streets, and business areas of some of the most income, you know, lowest-income residents of my district and Sean's district, or Councilmember Lilly's district. How can we ensure that this partnership addresses and prevents this kind of imposition on working low-income residents?
Thank you for your question. I will start, and I'll ask if, if any of my colleagues want to follow up with that. I will say that the American River Parkway is something that is patrolled by the county. We do have park rangers that are, it, it doesn't fall under my purview, so I'm going to just give you my limited answer, but happy to.
Whatever you can, thank you so much.
Moreful, so I, we do have outreach and engagement teams that do provide outreach prior to doing any sort of enforcement on the Parkway. What we do know is that with the storms, we found the Parkway to be a highly volatile area when it came to flooding, in fact, dangerous area in many cases. We've also found that there's been a lot of fires on the Parkway that have threatened not only the habitat, but the residents along the Parkway. And so the park rangers have had to go in and move folks. Prior to doing that, though, we are sending in services and outreach and engagement to try to get folks to take services and to come into shelter where, when it's available. We're also working on an American River Parkway project to develop specific shelter beds for the Parkway. We, we did receive some funding from the state to do that, and we're working on some projects to build that out. You know, at this point, I think it's, it's sort of a tricky thing when you ask someone to move. You don't really tell them where they can go. You, you basically tell them that they can't be in a specific area. So even though we do have a Parkway ordinance, the rangers aren't out telling people they can't be anywhere on the Parkway, just in the specific locations that may put them or put others at risk. So that's what I.
Yeah, thank you. Just, you know, I, my district borders the Garden Highway, and the amount of calls that I have received and the number of homeless encampments that just went across the street and right into the residential areas or into the levees on the other side has been vast. And, you know, I, I get calls all the time. So I'd love to maybe connect with the county to see how we can address some of these concerns because I know Councilmember Lilly and I have the same kind of level of constituent calls.
Absolutely, and our teams are working together, including law enforcement, park rangers, SAC PD, to really try to notify one another when one of these enforcement actions does take place.
Okay, thank you. My next one is prevention, and I guess can tie into the workshop in terms of how we prioritize prevention. I know one of the callers said, you know, keeping people in their homes is the best way that we can do so. And so as us, as the city and the county, working with SHRA, we need to continue addressing the affordability gap and investing in housing, economic roots of the issue, and making sure that our senior population doesn't go unhoused because right now that's our most vulnerable population, and we got to make sure that they don't experience homelessness and along with our youth. My next question for the county. I know DCR and SAC PD are generally working in concert with one another with the same goal in mind. Communication across those departments seems like an obvious component to tackling the problem. So I was wondering if the county and the sheriff's department communicates with the city when we're doing outreach or when there's enforcement happening.
So I can't really speak behalf on the, on behalf of the sheriff's department. We, we are working to increase our collaboration with the sheriff's department and the Hot Teams, but I, I can't really speak to that, but that might be another good component of a workshop.
Okay, yeah. And Mayor, I think you stated it well earlier when you began this conversation in regards to working with our newly-elected sheriff to see how we can address this, you know, with populations being released from the county jail. We feel the impact in our neighborhoods, on the rivers, and here in the area, so we've got to make sure that people get services to be able to relocate home.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that just a little bit. What I can say is that it has been a concern that we have been working on in terms of releases from jail. Previously, under the laws that existed, certain inmates, when they got released from jail, would need to be released at their own will at whatever hour that was. There's been some law changes that allow the jail to keep folks, or at least offer them, to stay into, throughout the night so they can leave the next day during an evening hours. Additionally, under CalAim, the state's CalAim, jail in reach is something that will be stood up for inmates by January of 2024. And what that means is that organizations will be going into the jail, connecting with inmates so that as they, as they are released from the jail, they have smooth pathways and transitions into services. Additionally, the county has contracted with an organization called SAC Covered, many of you know, who has opened a storefront on 7th and H. And when inmates are released from jail, they will be contacted by the jail and be able to go over and receive services. And then we have some other services such as the Public Defender's Pretrial Program. They do go in and connect with folks, probation departments, JDTRC. So there's several programs we've set up or are in the process of setting up over this past several months that I think you probably have already seen, seen a reduction in folks being released from the jail at all hours, but you'll continue to see an increased reduction in that.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now.
I'd, I'd like to follow up on one of your questions, Ms. Fund. And I know that, you know, it's not putting you on the spot in this way, but this question of the Parkway. Again, completely acknowledge there's an independently-elected sheriff, and we need to talk to Sheriff Cooper, who's a friend, about this as well. But I just, I just want to understand your, your sense of the facts on the ground. And ask the police chief maybe this question as well and others. But from a county perspective, do you believe that Parkway enforcement, in whatever way it's being conducted, is shifting a substantial number of people from the Parkway into the city?
I, I really can't answer that. You know, I will be happy to bring back our Director of Parks, but I think, yeah, maybe Chief Lester has some more information.
Maybe we'll put Chief Lester on the spot here.
Thank you.
Because she works for us, she works for us.
I'm sorry, I just, I heard my name, but I didn't hear what the question was.
We're having a very good discussion about the relationship between Parkway enforcement on the homeless problem and the impact on the city.
Right.
Because we're in partnership here, and so having honest conversations about where we push on one end, what the impact on another end is, and we respect the, obviously. And we respect the, obviously, we all revere the Parkway and understand the need to make it safer and cleaner. But, or and, not but, and what is the impact on the city? So the question is, and maybe if you want to think about this, you don't have to answer it right now. But do you believe that Parkway enforcement, in whatever way it is being conducted, is shifting a substantial number of homeless people, unsheltered people into our city?
Well, I think anytime that you have enforcement and you're moving people, you're going to see an impact somewhere. I can't give you the numbers for sure. I know that the county has given us some notice when they decide to conduct enforcement on the Parkway. I can certainly follow up and try and get you some more information from the county sheriff and from the rangers on what they're doing. But to generally answer your question, yes, if you will see displacement issues when you move people. We see that with some of the weather events as well, and certainly if we are moving people.
I just think the broader point here, you know, that we can express directly, again, to other county officials, but is that this is part, this needs to be part of the partnership discussion as well. Because we feel the impacts.
Work on getting you more information on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief. Thank you, Siobhan. Appreciate it. Okay. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions and comments. First, I just want to thank staff for your presentation. I also want to take this time to just say thank you to everyone who had the ability to call in. And I also would like to support councilmember Jennings' request to hold a workshop so that we can ensure that we hold space for folks who are closest to the pain. Those that were not able to speak today, I want to make sure that this council hears directly from them. Before I ask a few of my questions, I do want to thank Mario. I want to thank SAC Steps Forward, Siobhan from the county as well, LaShelle, thank you to SHRA, and especially to Nick and Ben in particular, and our entire DCR team. These entire 16-plus team members who are working day in and day out to serve our residents experiencing homelessness. I think we all have a consensus that when we talk about addressing homelessness, it means all hands on deck. And that means that no one entity can do this alone. And so I just really want to just send to our city staff and say thank you to you for the work that you do each, every single day. You know, I had the opportunity earlier this week to do a ride-along with DCR staff. I've been out in the field with DCR staff over the past two years that I've been a councilwoman to our encampments in District Eight, working with CBO partners to really serve our encampments that are incredibly diverse in age, diverse in language, race, ethnicity, identity, and even diverse in their need. And from my conversation over the past two and a half years from those that are experiencing homelessness and also hearing from staff is that I am thrilled that we have a coordinated system now. That's great. But what I'm also hearing is that our coordinated access is not fast enough. We have this coordinated system, but it's not fast enough to respond to the need. And simply, this issue is very complex. But simply put, the reason why the coordinated access is not fast enough is because we simply don't have enough beds. We don't have enough permanent supportive housing. And so this question is for Mario and Siobhan as well. I hope that you are collecting this data, and I'm interested to know, because oftentimes you hear folks from the other side that says, you know, we offer housing options or shelter options, and folks are quote-unquote "service resistant." But when I was out there with DCR, there are folks that need housing now, and they're like ready to go. And so I want to know, on a daily basis, how many residents are we touching that are experiencing homelessness who are ready for shelter? They have said yes, but we simply don't have a bed for them. Do we track that number?
That say yes, and we don't have a bed for them? I would ask either Ben or Nick to speak to that if they are tracking that number. But generally, we're doing daily counts now, and we have beds available on a limited basis. Yes, we don't have enough beds available for everyone who is homeless. But in general, if somebody is willing to accept services, we are able to triage them and get them connected to services within a short period of time.
So Mario, are you saying, because that's not what I'm hearing from the field when I'm out there, is that when we offer housing and if a person says, if, you know, are you ready to be sheltered? And the person says yes, it's not automatic that we're able to put them in a bed?
It's not automatic. It's not instant. But for example, if we have Miller Park or we have OEC, those are triage centers. We are able to stabilize folks there. And then and there, we get them connected into the system. And then we're able to find the right fit for them. It's nuanced, because sometimes a person that's willing to accept services has been, has been, has been, has lost their ability to accept services in certain programs and locations. But the bottom line is that if somebody is willing to accept services, DCR will work with them. They will stay connected with them, and they are able to get them into a shelter within a short period of time.
Okay, I see Nick coming up.
I don't even know if I need the microphone, because it's so- Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nick Golling, Homeless Services Manager with the Department of Community Response. Mayor Protam, for your questions to speak to people's willingness to be able to go into a location. It's kind of a nuanced answer. Not every program is necessarily going to be something that's really fitting for every individual, whether it's a transitional-age youth, whether it's a family with children, or whether it's a single. And then even just within that, there's a wide range. So what we found on our end is that when we do have, you know, we know that there's a wide range of programs to be able to offer. We're generally able to get more. But to elaborate on what Mario was saying as well is that one of the great things about coordinated access and getting all of the programs in the community integrated into that system is that you might have people that have tried and haven't done well in programs, particularly maybe programs that are city-funded. So they're not necessarily able to return to that program. But other programs, whether they're funded by the county or whether they're funded by the private side, if they haven't been integrated into coordinated access yet, those are programs that that person might be able to be successful in that they haven't tried yet. And so it is expanding that. But, and I'm sure perhaps, and I'm not going to put SSF on the spot to explain necessarily, but I think also part of what we're seeing with coordinated access is it is taking a little bit of time to integrate the programs into that system. We're seeing it with the family programs that are funded by the county and then as well as the city. It's, I mean, I would have loved for us to jump on this, certainly as soon as possible. But I understand there's a lot, you know, there's a lot that it takes.
So Nick, let me ask you this question. Is there a need to diversify our options in terms of shelter and housing? Given what's the one-on-one with our staff and folks that are experiencing homelessness, is there a need to diversify our housing options? Because right now, what I'm hearing is that we have the current sprung shelter that we have. My understanding, I'm not part of the two buys, is that the county was only willing to do shelters that's in a building, right? And so my question to you is, do we need to diversify our options in order to meet the need?
Well, I can tell you that homelessness and the causes of homelessness and people's needs when they're experiencing homelessness are diverse. They're diverse needs. And so when you have a wide range of programs that a community could offer, it certainly doesn't hurt.
Do we have enough diversify options on the table?
No, and I don't know that we will. I don't know that there's going to be a time where we have all those things. But sure, I mean, there's, I will always certainly advocate for more availability within the entire continuum of care.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate that. My next question is, earlier in the presentation, it was noted that there was 1,300 contacts at 10 encampments. I'm curious to know what constitute a contact? Is it putting them in the coordinated system? Is it providing services? Is it, like, what constitute an actual contact when we count our numbers?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So what we talk about, and the county teams do this as well, is there's contacts and there's engagements. So contacts would be if our teams are responding by way of 311, and we see someone who's experiencing homelessness, and we work to engage and communicate with them. But they're not really ready to talk to us. They're not ready to make an engagement and a conversation that we could actually put them into the homeless management information system. That would be a contact. And engagement is when people are actually saying, hey, you know what? I might be actually interested in some of these services. I think that I'm ready. Or yes, I'll go ahead and I'll give you my name so we can check and, you know, see if they're a missing person or see if they have other resources that they're connected to in the community that we could work to reunify them with. So contact does not necessarily mean engagement, which is why we do split that out.
Yeah. I'd love to see that break down, Nick, if possible, for county and city, kind of like what constitutes a contact. And I think it might, because I'm going to take a look at the slide again, because I just got the paper document. But I think really breaking it down, like the engagement, like what you just articulated right now to the council, I think it's really important so that we can share that with the community. Because it sounds like there is a difference between just a contact and an engagement and want to be able to understand that data, so.
Absolutely.
My next question, and this is more of a comment. Just really glad to see that there's a commitment through this MOU to ensure that we have multidisciplinary teams. I have heard directly from our city and county field team that they work really well together, so that's great. But again, it goes back to the bottleneck, right? Like, we need to diversify our options in terms of housing. That's so important. And Nick, like you said, moving people across the continuum. I'm, maybe this question is for Siobhan. If this is really directed to the county. Wanted to know, you know, and I mentioned it earlier, my understanding through the MOU and what I've heard from the two buys is that the county is only providing a specific shelter. Just want to understand the county's rationale for that. Like, would you be open to doing safe parkings, right? Because we have numerous RVs. I'm just curious to know what the county's position is. Yeah.
So if I can restate your question and make sure I understand. So when you say the county is only open to a specific type, you mean a shelter type? Like, we're not open to, right? Okay. So yes, we have found that folks are more likely to stay and be, come inside and be successful when we can offer shelter where they have their own space. I think COVID did teach us that when folks can have their own space, those folks who we weren't able to bring inside into congregate shelter are more likely to accept it. So absolutely, and it's easier to manage. And so we are focusing our efforts and our resources on building out these Safe Stay communities. We have also found that we are open to things like safe parking. We are working on a safe parking solution on our Watt Avenue site while we are building out the inside and the tiny homes, which takes a little bit more time. So we are open to other suggestions and ideas, and I certainly am taking notes and listening. We just want to make sure that what we're operating is effective and that we're really honing our resources in on those strategies that are going to be most effective in the long term. And for us, we've chosen Safe Stay communities for that.
Thanks, Siobhan. Appreciate your answer to that. And then my last, it's a question, but it's also a comment, kind of directed towards the mayor and city manager. Mayor, you know, one of the best structural moves you did for the city is ensuring that we have an alternate response instead of SAC PD after George Floyd. Because I think we know from research is that PD does not have the expertise or are they equipped to really provide the coordination of behavioral health services? And that is what the Department of Community Response was intended to do, in partnership with the county, because the county provides the behavioral health services. Our previous director, I would say, almost retired a few months, not even a few months, almost a year ago. And to date, my understanding is that we have not yet hired a director of community response. And so I am requesting and asking just a status update because it is a department. A department should have a director to really assist with the implementation, to fulfill its mission. And wanted to know what the timeline is, ensuring that we have a director on board.
I'll take that question, Mayor Protam. We're not in a position to hire a director at this point. We're rethinking what DCR is going to look like. I think I've said this in open session with the council because we're going to have DCR revert back to what it was created for, and that's alternative response. What's happened over COVID is that it's morphed into the homeless services division where Nick is right now. So we're, we've been talking about a model that we're going to present to this council. Once we get it dialed in, it's going to include police, fire, code, DCR, park rangers. And it's going to be a more focused approach across all city departments. So I'm not in a position to appoint anybody at this point until we can figure out what the new structure looks like, which is really the old structure, to your point about why it was created for alternative response.
I guess I'm not satisfied with that.
You want me to add to that a little bit?
Yeah, if you can add to that, just because, I mean, yeah, Mayor, it was your idea, and I want to make sure that we can fulfill it, right? Because I think we know that there's a need here at the city that we're not able to meet, and that's why the department was created. And so-
So here is the, city manager's correct. There's an evolution here of this. So George, when George Floyd was murdered, our immediate response, my immediate response is, there was twofold. One was establish an alternative 911 system. And two, appoint an inspector general so that officer-involved shootings or serious allegations of violence could be investigated independently. We have an inspector general now as part of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. DCR became our default for homeless response and homeless intervention, willingly and out of necessity. And this is part of what led to the city-county partnership agreement in many respects. Because what we finally said, and again, just being candid here, is that the city can no longer bear the full brunt of this. We can't do it. The police department shouldn't be doing it. And the DCR, we intended for something different. And so now the question that is before us, with the partnership agreement now in place, with the health plans, the county mental health workers, and some portion of DCR now dedicated to homeless intervention, is there an opportunity to rework and reorganize and go back to the original intent of DCR? go back to the original intent of DCR? And so, in some ways, defend the city manager on this, on this one here, I would be a little, I'm a little anxious about this too, because I don't like when there are vacancies in departments for a long period of time. But in some ways, we want to make sure that we're hiring the director that is actually the person who can lead the DCR towards its original mission, which is to be alternative response for mental health calls, for non-criminal calls, not necessarily related to homeless situation. And so, we're a little bit in between, and I think it may be worth at least thinking through this a little bit longer while not letting the time, you know, go by too, too long. Just to go a little deeper, one of the things I know we want to talk to the county about is, is there a way for us to add to our encampment engagement outreach, not just with county personnel, not just with the health plans, not just with the city, but with some of our, with some of our FQHCs, for example, right? Under the new mental health crisis model? Excuse me? I'm thinking about one in particular, you know, where we've just sort of had some informal conversations, because maybe some of those experts can supplement what it is we're doing so that we have more coverage. I'm as impatient, Nick, my nickname is, I'm mayor impatient here. They will all, they will all tell you that, right? Anyone who, who has worked with me. And I continue to be, maybe a little, you know, less edgy, because we're trying to, we're trying to build together here, but no less impatient. And that's why I raised the issue tonight of, I want 200 beds. Don't want to wait till 2024. We need 200 additional beds so we can begin humane, Rick Jennings, Councilmember Jennings, have a cleaner and safer city in a humane way. That's what I think we need to strive for, summer, not January or February 2024. The organizational questions, I think on a parallel track, we have to, we have to answer the question you're, you're asking. But let's do it, let's do it when we are, know exactly what role we want the DCR to play over the, over the medium and long term.
Okay, so, just curious note, we're six months in. I feel like we should, and we're, right, we're implementing the six months, we're into the MOU, so are we saying that we're still trying to figure out?
Here's the simple answer. We have the outreach, and now have eight clinical mental health workers, Mario and the county, they have the heat map. We know the priorities. Now, I'm going to insist that that encampment engagement outreach that, you know, we have some had discussion about protocols. I don't want them leaving the 10 encampments until we have literally exhausted every effort to help get people out. What we're missing now, what we're missing now are the additional beds. When we get the 200 and the 350, and we get them up, and we have some interim solutions in the meantime, i.e., that's why I raised vagabond, that's why we're going to do Miller Park, that's why we're talking about the, the North Area Science Center, I always mix up the name, but the, and get that to, thank you, Auburn Boulevard, get that to 75 beds, then we're going to be able to have more of the connection. And the county, in every instance, we may argue, and we will, by the way, down the line, about what it means to say whatever it takes and who's responsible for that. But at a minimum, the county knows and they agree that they are responsible for providing the services to the people that we, you know, that collectively or individually that we bring inside. So, it's, we have a foundation, but we got to push really hard for more immediate relief, and then follow through on the longer-term projects, and then DCR, which is one, but these people are wonderful, by the way. Let's just be clear. They really are. Really wonderful. Thank you. I know there's an academic, this is a discussion about you all, and we're talking about, you're, you're wonderful, as are the county outreach workers, so, but, let's do, let's do DCR medium-term and long-term right, and we still have some work to do to, to get there.
I guess, for me, I feel like both can be true. We can push on the housing, and we can also push to ensure that, I just, I just believe that it is a department, and just like all of our departments, yipsey, public works. It's important to make sure that we have leadership at the helm of a department. I think that's just important for implementation, but we can agree to disagree, and I just want to make sure we, I just want to emphasize that.
I'd like to follow up just real quick here.
Okay.
Because you talk about leadership at the department here. I want to understand the nature of the question, because if you look at DCR year-over-year, you'll see resources by this council put into that department that's increased over year. And right now, Mario is doing double duty with Nick as the acting department head. I have that situation throughout our city very frequently. We have Ryan Moore, who's an assistant city manager, as the interim public works director. I just want to get it right. You know, by virtue of hiring somebody in to a position that we haven't defined is fraught with issues. So, if it's a resource issue, I could have an offline discussion with you about what that looks like, but I just don't believe right now is the time to appoint the director without knowing what the future is for DCR.
So, Howard, can I ask you, so, are you saying to me that you don't know what the direction, what the mission of DCR is right now, so we don't have a position?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
So, why do we not have a director? I guess that's just my question.
Because the DCR model that we're trying to implement is going to be different than what it is today. So, hiring somebody into the current structure is going to be a misfit going forward.
Okay. Can I ask you, when can you bring that back, what that will look like?
I won't be bringing that back. That's an appointment that's under my purview.
Okay.
I, I think we will bring, no, what's really valid, though, is, you know, consistent with Rick Jennings' suggestion, is the workshop to discuss about, to discuss the future of DCR and the timing, you know, based on resources, based upon, about when that transition can occur from exclusively homeless intervention and homeless response to alternative 911. I mean, that's, that's, that's different from when are we appointing a director?
Yeah, no, thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, I think we can add that to Councilmember Jennings' additional workshop, that would be great. I'll just add one more thing. I guess, you know, because folks, you and city manager have talked about, so that it can go back to what it was. I mean, before, the Office of Violence Prevention was in DCR, and then it got moved to PD. And so, for me, if we're going to go back to the original, then I think for me, and I'm just going to say this on record, is that then the Office of Violence Prevention should go back to DCR, right? Because if we're really thinking about forming an alternate department, for me, that, my understanding, that was your vision, Mayor, and that was a vision that I agree with, because that's what I believe the city needed. And so, you know, I know there's been changes that has happened in terms of department, but just really want to say that if we really are to fulfill the Department of Community Response, that directorship is important. And we can continue this conversation, I think, with the workshop that Councilmember Jennings brought up, to have it before June 30, because I think that's really important for this council to have that discussion.
You all want to end up in the same place.
Sounds great.
You all want to end up in the same place.
Thank you.
I will say one thing here, and then I'll just leave it alone. Probably no other department do I bring back to this council to have a discussion about what the organizational structure needs to look like. I think what's important here is with this workshop, if you provide the outcomes you want to see...
That's what we're talking about.
That's, it sort of is, but what I'm hearing is that we want to talk about how and when we appoint my employees.
That's not, no.
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, that's what you heard. I'm, 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 I want to, I'm going to be clear to sort of mediate this here. I, I'm agreeing with Mayor Protam Vang's ultimate goal, but I'm agreeing with you on your prerogative. To me, respectfully, it should not be about the appointment of the director. It should be about the future of DCR and what the reasonable timeframes are to get it to, to transition to its original intent. And that's not easy. It's financial, it, it is a huge structural issue, and it also begs the question of how consistent with the partnership agreement, we are going to do the homeless outreach that we have, that we have signed up to do. We're contractually committed, by what I took binding agreement, whatever it takes, we're contractually committed to the county as well. It's not just them committed to us, we're committed to them, and that's part of our commitment. Fair?
Thanks, Mayor. And then, just lastly, I will ditto Councilmember Jennings' request for the additional workshop, ditto to Councilmember Talamontes on ensuring that we get the same presentation that the county supervisor got as well. It was much more thorough. And then, we also heard from an additional public speaker tonight about some policies that we can implement now, like tenant protection. So, as part of the workshop that Councilmember Jennings requested, I would like to request that that comes back as well. And then, lastly, ensuring that we are able to hold space for those that are most impacted by homelessness, and want to make sure that we, we hear from them directly. And so, really looking forward to that workshop. Thank you so much, Councilmember Jennings.
Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just want to start out, I think most of us do this, but I think it's really important to say that I'm just really grateful. I know, you know, recently did my ride along with DCR as well, and just grateful for all the work that goes into it. I know it's got to be, without a doubt, one of the most difficult jobs in the city. And, you know, we all sit here as, you know, individuals in offices that field a lot of calls related to homelessness, related to the issues that are happening on our streets, but you guys are the ones that are going out there and really talking to people and engaging and trying to help them, and I know that you have a real passion for it. And so, I feel like we're in very good hands when you're out there, and I was really impressed by the professionalism that I saw during my ride along. So, I just wanted to say that. And then, also, as a member of the four by two by, you know, Homeless Policy Council and all the various names and acronyms, I feel really grateful to be in the room and be a part of the discussions as well. I think it's, I think we're getting into a better place every day, and I'm new here, so I think maybe I have the benefit of optimism, but I'm, I feel like we're in a good place to move forward and have a really positive dynamic and relationship moving forward, and I think that that's going to benefit all of the residents of our, of our region. So, I wanted to start out with that, and then I think my, some of my questions might be directed at Sacramento Steps Forward initially. So, I know, I had one of my staff watching the county presentation as well today, and I think I heard or learned that there's some, there's a statistic related to the number of people that are entering into homelessness versus that are already there, and I don't know if that was three for one or two for one. I don't know if anyone can speak to that.
It's three for one.
It's three? Okay, thank you. So, do we, do we know the timeframe on that? So, how often are people entering onto this? Thank you, I'm so sorry to make you come up.
Yeah, so, so it was three for one, and that was last year, so we were looking at 2022's data.
Okay, three for everyone. So, for every one person that were able to get into something, whether it's housing or some kind of service or shelter, then we were expecting to see three people enter.
Yeah, that just, that just counts for housing, not necessarily shelter.
Yes, housing, okay, that's really helpful.
People exiting the homeless system, whether it's through permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, or market rate housing that they may otherwise be finding.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Well, not wonderful, but thank you for sharing that information. And then, I guess one of the things that I didn't see on the worksheet here, is that we talk about contacts, engagements, encampments, or shelter, is we don't, I don't see a number on here related to how many, since we started, and this might not be for you, so it's, sorry to make you stand up there, how many people that, since we've created the city-county teams have been exited into housing, like permanent housing? So, I don't know if that's a data point that we keep.
That is not a data point that we have conveniently available. That would have to be a separate report that would be built out within HMIS to track those folks. We're just really tracking them from when they get in touch with our teams and where they go next.
Okay.
That, next part after that, we wouldn't be able to get some real meaningful data for probably another year on that.
Okay.
But we certainly, we certainly could, given an ample amount of time for people to engage with programs.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I think that that would be a really important thing for us, you know, as a collective, the city and the county, to track that, because, you know, some people might enter into a shelter and stay there for some period of time, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're exiting out of their situation on the street. They might end up back on the street, they might end up somewhere else. And they certainly might do that from housing as well, but I would assume that that's a lot less likely. Thank you. And then, this might be another question for Sacramento Steps, or for Sacramento Steps Forward, but I, there was some mention related to the programs, percentage of programs that are in the coordinated access system. So, can you explain a little bit what, what's the barrier to getting those into the system more quickly? I know that you said that there's currently 400, if I'm thinking about that correctly, 600 beds in the coordinated access system and 400 coming online shortly. And I'm just curious too, is there a timeline for when we expect the total number of programs that exist to be into the coordinated access system?
Yes. So, 600 beds as of today, or sorry, yes, 600 beds approximately are within the system today, available through the process I outlined. An additional 423 expected to come on by the end of July. Those families are all fam, sorry, those shelters are all family programs, so it's the congregate shelter programs through the county, that the county funds, as well as the city motel programs that the city funds. So, those programs introduce families which we haven't had in the system, through this process before. Part of why there's a length of time, it takes a little while to bring the programs online, is because this is a new way of doing business for folks. Every shelter has operated their own front doors to some degree, either through some type of collaboration or partnership, and it's not ever been done at this scale before. So, there is some, some growing that, that is part of that process of bringing programs online. So, we work with the program staff within those shelters to make sure that they understand how this works, what their responsibilities are, how they enter this data into HMIS so we can see real-time bed availability. In addition to that, there's also a process that includes the 2-on-1 staff who are actually kind of managing those referrals. So, some of it goes into building the backend data so that we can provide, you know, a list of all the clients who are eligible for those shelters, including the new programs that come online. And the onboarding process for each of these programs is about five or six weeks on our end, just to get everything, train the providers, get the information we need, start to sort of turn those systems over into the new process. And the reason why we can't necessarily do them all at the same time is it's also a pretty big impact on the 2-on-1 staff as well. So, we like to leave about a two-week cushion, is what we've seen, between each of those programs coming online, so we can really problem-solve with the shelter provider in a one-on-one basis. So, any issues that are arising from either transitioning their existing waitlist over to this new process, or just, you know, problem-solving, bed availability and all that, they can really have that focused kind of attention for about two weeks before we bring on another provider. It doesn't mean that we won't continue to work with them, and that's actually a really strong aspect of this, is that there's really close coordination with 2-on-1 and the shelter providers, but that's what we found has worked. So, in addition to those, so, at the end of July, we'll have about 1,000 beds, and then the hope is to bring in about additional 600 through some other programs throughout the rest of the year. Some of that time is, timing is based on just the engagement with those providers, the two-week cushion, and then, of course, state, Safe Stay programs, for instance, coming on later in the year as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was really helpful. Appreciate it. So, I think the rest of what I have are comments. You can sit down. So, I'm going to start kind of more globally, just general thoughts, and I know I've had these conversations with our legal counsel and others. I think as a city, because I can only speak from, from my perspective of what we're, our jurisdiction is, I think that we have a lot of policies on the books, and some not on the books in general, that outline where people cannot be, where people can't sleep at night, where they can't camp, where they can't park, where they can't be in a park at what time. And it's really unclear to me whether or not we have any policies in place that explicitly tell people where they can be. And I think that that's a really big issue when we talk about enforcement, right? The enforcement that is happening already, the enforcement that is soon to happen as a result of Measure O and, and others. And so, I think that one thing that we can do that would might be really helpful for people who are experiencing this right now, because I think it's, we can all acknowledge that we don't have enough resources, and we probably won't for, in the near term, enough housing for people, enough shelter beds, that there will be people sleeping on our streets. That's just the reality of it, and that's the reality that every person in Sacramento sees every day. And so, I think it'll be incumbent on us to help people understand what they are allowed to do, because right now, it feels like whack-a-mole for people who are experiencing this, is, you know, I'm parking my car somewhere, I'm parking my camper, I can't be here, I have to move, I go move to this other place, and on and on. And we can all think about those examples, so I won't go into detail, but I think that's something that I would love to see us think about, and maybe we can talk about this in our workshop, because I really support that idea, Councilmember Jennings. I think it makes sense for us to have a more in-depth conversation about that. So, that's a more global point that I'd like to make, that I'd love to see that. I also think that when we talk about the exits to housing, you know, and this flow, that three to one, that's really alarming to me, and I think that's alarming to a lot of people, that we're, we're not stemming the flow, we're, we're putting our energy here as we should be. We want to help people who are experiencing, you know, the challenge of living on our streets. However, we're also not, not stemming the flow, people coming into our streets, and our problem is growing each and every day. And so, I think prevention is key. We talk about that a lot, but to me, that means tenant protections. That means keeping people in their homes. And I'm really interested, especially as we see things like our renters hotline, that's no longer in action, now that Sacramento self-help housing is now defunct, I'm really interested in ways that we can update our tenant protection program to make sure that we're capturing more people, and making sure that we're not, that we have a tenant anti-harassment policy, because I think if we can start, if we can help people stay in their homes, that's one way that we can stem the flow while we focus our energy on everything else. Otherwise, we're going to continue to go in circles. So, that's something I think is really important. Another thing that I think was, you know, I have to give, cut it to Councilmember Loey and the city team and our city attorney's office and everyone who worked on camp resolution. Of course, it's not a perfect solution, nothing is, but I think it was a very innovative way to deal with an encampment that already existed that was self-sustaining. And so, you know, I think that we should take a look at and see, are there other opportunities for things like this in our city? I think that it's, again, not perfect, and I know that that probably makes some people like cringe to think about, but we already know that people are existing on our streets. I like to operate within the reality of the situation that we're in. And so, with that, to me, means are there opportunities for us to collaborate with the county to create water and sanitation infrastructure, right? Because a lot of the encampments that exist in our city don't even adhere to the World Health Organization's guidelines for refugee encampments. We don't like not having basic access to water when it's about to be 100 degrees outside multiple days in a row, not having basic access to sanitation, which is a public health issue in my mind. And so, you know, yes, these are imperfect solutions, but are there things that we can do in the interim to create some kind of structure so that people can exist and live? Another thing I'm really interested in is tracking data on enforcement. So, I think enforcement is happening at various levels. I've asked this of the, of the city auditor when we were talking about our audit on homelessness in general, but it's really unclear to me, in my position here, how often that enforcement is even happening in my district, and how often people are being asked to move. And I think that that is really important for us to understand and know, because if we're going to think about how we're spending our resources in the city on this policy issue, I think knowing that number, tracking that data is going to be really important to understanding it. And frankly, when we know that we don't have places for people to go, and we don't have a policy in place for, where people can, they know where they can be, if there, if there aren't shelter beds or housing or other resources available to them, enforcement and moving them around exacerbates the problem. It makes it worse, and often makes their, the outcomes of their lives worse as well. So, I think that that's something that I would love to see, is a, is a better data tracking on enforcement and what that looks like. And then, just last, last comment here, given this conversation around the future of DCR, frankly, it makes me very concerned. I hope that whatever the future of DCR is continues to include, my phrase is sent differently. I'm, I'm curious whether or not, right now, I would say at least 80%, if not more, of the calls that I get into my office and emails and comments and you name it, are related to homelessness and people wanting a response. And so, I'm curious if whatever future DCR we have planned will still include the ability for people to, to engage on that?
You want me to try?
Like, what will happen when people call the city related to homelessness?
Well, this is my, my point of view. We will not transition DCR back to its original purpose, which is alternative 911, for a whole wide range of calls that are crisis in nature, not necessarily homeless. whole wide range of calls that are crisis in nature, not necessarily homeless. We will not do that unless and until we have additional or alternative resources, or just alternative approach to be able to do the homeless outreach. That can't go away. The cities, we're, we're in, we're in contract with the county. We're all in. The, the question is whether, o, over time, we evolve the organization to fulfill its broader mandate while at the same time finding ways, either as part of DCR, or in some other way, with the nonprofit community, with the FQHCs, a different resource base, that we continue to do this work in partnership with the county. So I don't think you have to worry about that.
Okay. That, that makes me, I appreciate that, that response, and I, yeah, I'm definitely, you know, I, I obviously, you know, resources are always a question, and we have to decide those as, as a body about how we spend our resources, but I'll just state for the record from my own personal opinion, I think that having, you know, teams, having, you know, 24-hour teams of people that are addressing these issues is going to be important in the future, because right now, we have a pretty, you know, well, it's amazing work, and it's, it's limited in scope to Monday through Friday, and I think a lot happens on the evening times, on the weekends, and, you know, just like we, right now, we have a 24-hour response to fire, we have a 24-hour response to police calls. We, we already know how to do that, we've created departments related to that, and we deem those as important issues for our city. I would be interested in what does it look like for us if we were to explore the opportunity to have that kind of real-time response for homelessness in particular? And so I will end my comments there, and just appreciate the time.
Yeah, I just comment on that. I think what's going to be very appropriate here, because you're talking about a fundamental shift in where DCR is and the services the city will provide. It's a perfect opportunity, because we're in the midst of this priority setting with the council, that we're going to have an open session. And so to the extent the council wants to shift resources to doing something like that, and quite frankly, any other program, absolutely. And that's, that's the conversation we want to have. But what I want to say about DCR today is that it's not going to look the same tomorrow as it does today, because it can't. It's not sustainable. We talked about funding that the mayor is securing. You've, you've seen our budget with all the, you know, the $42 million, and over time, if those resources stop coming in, we're not going to have the ability to staff DCR the way we do it now, because a lot of it is propped up with ARPA, CRF, and other, and HEAP and HEP. But if it's the desire of this council to shift that, that is a perfect conversation for open session when we set priorities for this coming year.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I want to thank Councilmember Jennings for clearly laying out the discussion we need to have, because I, I think, city manager, as, as you briefly just talked about it, the council is talking about priorities. And I think we have to set priorities, taking a little liberty. I'm pretty sure that the top two tend to go around unhoused and housing. And I see that our discussion that we're going to have with council member, that Councilmember Jennings requested, and I, we're going, I want to make sure that we have it focused, because unfortunately homelessness has existed since the beginning of time. I know people smarter than I have tried to solve it. I know this is a problem throughout California. And I also know one workshop, we are not going to come to a solution that is going to truly address this. Government works slow, painfully so, sometimes inappropriately so. But I think as we look at this, and this body has been discussing it with other council members to varying degrees, it is important as we move forward, when we have this workshop, that as we look at what Measure O is, we look at that in light of, what is the city's role? How do we clearly define that? Because then we, as a council, say what the city's role is, then we start moving the actions underneath that. And that also requires getting as much data as possible. I too had a staff member watching the county presentation, and he gave me three pages of notes with a lot of information, and I want to thank Councilmember Maple for bringing up, because I have emboldened, for every one person who exits homelessness, three are entering it. And guess what? There is not one answer. But I think what we have to do right now is really have a workshop and narrowly define as it relates to Measure O and our partnership. What is the city's role moving forward, and what is our comprehensive plan, informed by the city and county agreement? And I think the discussion, as we look at DCR, maybe because I'm a, I'm a little bit of a governance geek, I, it, it is the obligation of us as a city council to state our priorities, what we believe in, how we want to budget our priorities. And then that's up to our city manager to implement them. And if we don't like what our city manager is doing, to hold him accountable, either it's a good relationship or it's not a good relationship. But it is very important, when we say we have programs, to give the city manager the authority to implement them, and when there is, based on data and other things, that needs to be a shift, I, it is the responsibility of the city manager to bring it back to us for that discussion in that direction. And I feel very comfortable with our current city manager that having a pause, because it is important, as our city manager is working with every department in every city, what is right for our city in the overarching, plus, what is right and how do we implement our budget? Because I wish we had unlimited funding, we don't. And if data is informing us on what we could do in DCR better as we change it, I need the city manager to come back with us to present that, so we as a council can have a full direction. Because while DCR was created, and I believe in its mission and its vision, we now have new council members. So we need to bring it back, because it also needs to be informed by, by a council majority of what that clarity is. And I will go back to, as we move forward and we look at our partnership, the number one thing we need to make sure that is so important, consistency. We cannot have the county do one thing and the city do another. And that's why, thank you, Councilmember Talamontes, when you talk about the American River Parkway, it covers a lot of our city, and we can't have the, oh, you move here, you move here. What is it and what does it look like, so that as we move forward, we have that consistency? So as Councilmember Jennings brought up, where we need to have, what is our plan moving forward in this partnership, and what does it look like? It also needs to talk about data, metrics. I think it's really important, as we look at things, if we're going to change them legally, what does Boise allow us? And I'll always go to the famous words of, we need to, whatever we do, narrowly tailor it. Because we need to look at how we're doing things and how can we implement things. And then second, I don't want to, because we're not, again, we're not going to solve this in one workshop. So I think we need to talk about Measure O, implementation, consistency, what's the city's plan. But we need on the backends to also talk about housing, because housing also addresses our unhoused and our homelessness. And that's where we need to come in, and we can also talk about a variety of services. What does housing look like? How do we define that? Where is our money? Where is the county's money? What, what services do we have that, one, we could do better, and how we do that? But I also don't want, when we start talking about things that we think can save things, to usurp the process when things are going through law and ledge, and we already have council working, or staff working on some items. It still needs to go through the process. I am not on the four-by-two. So I actually don't know what conversation is happening with Measure O. I am appreciative of this first conversation. I would like more in-depth or in-knowledge what's going on. It would, city manager, whether it's appropriate or not, I don't, like, I used to get weekly written reports as a school board member to find out the little things that were going on. I think it's important for those of us who are not serving on Measure O, whether we get like a monthly update that's included of what's being discussed without, like, I don't want to violate the Brown Act, but, but I think it may ease some of what some of us who are not on, on the partnership agreement may feel.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, as part of Measure O, there's a requirement to do an update to our council, and that comes through Assistant City Manager Laura. And if you want to have different categories you want us to include in that update, we can do that, but there's a base level of information that we're required to provide. And so I, we, we could talk with you offline about making sure that works for you.
Yeah, because I think, I think it's important, as we look at and we go forward, there's a, there's a checks and balances, because there may be times where things are being decided and we need to pause and go back to the respective bodies, because maybe, no offense, maybe the four of you decide something and the rest of us say, nope, not going there. So how do we balance that of getting enough updates so that we, as a council, can also be giving consistent direction? So there is that feedback, so that the four of my colleagues understand that, that given back. And then what measures are we putting in place to make sure there's consistency? Because the county is looking at a creation of their critical infrastructure ordinance. How are we making sure that we are staying in touch and working with the county, because they can't define something and then we define it differently?
You may ask Siobhan to talk a little bit about this, but we coordinated efforts here when, I, I can't remember the chronology of our critical infrastructure ordinance. We, we passed one, we updated it, worked with the county, and we coordinated language. I think it's, I think it's mirrored, yeah. Well, Siobhan?
Yeah, so I, I will just say, our county board of supervisors did pass a critical infrastructure ordinance last fall. We did look at the city's ordinance and, and took from that, but we have not yet brought back a resolution that would define what specifically is going to be covered under that. Certainly, I think conversations are important to have, and we will do that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, because that goes back into, as we're having these conversations that's Councilmember Jennings brought up, where we need to talk about the implementation and our enforcement, and how do we balance such a humanitarian, like, impact, in, in a way that we try and push towards addressing in a very human way, but implementing in a safety way, and how do we balance that? But I also know, I will go back to, I need to understand as well, when we have this workshop, what is the capacity of our staff? What are the resources? Because if we need to switch some things, then we, the, the council needs to vote, or a majority needs to give direction on, on what we believe in, because I think this needs to be a council majority direction of what we believe in and vote, so that it's very clear for the staff and the city manager to implement. I think we do a disservice to our community when we do not give direction, positive or negative, whatever, but give a direction for staff to implement, because I know everybody is working overtime at max capacity, so it's the understanding capacity, our allocation of resources, but we need data to make sure that we are making informed decisions, which means how do we, again, fast-track getting some of that information through Audit and Jorge? Because we're making decisions, and if we're making decisions without data, then how are we making informed decisions? So I, I appreciate all of this. I actually, my staff, thank you, appreciate the county and the comprehensive, kind of feel we, we got a mini-workshop, because that was done and understanding, and this is a daunting thing we're working on. And I know if you all had the answer, you would be giving it to us. But I'd like to, to have a workshop to, to really start laying it out and hearing clear council direction for what we should be doing.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Vice Mayor Garros first.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay. All right. Agree with Councilmember Kaplan on housing, housing, housing. I'm going to say housing a million times, but specifically affordable housing, it's the only way that we're going to find an exit to our homeless crisis. So let's find SHR some money, and I challenge the county to also do the same. I have several homeless encampments right behind my house right now. They're massive, they're large. And one of the biggest frustrations that I hear from my community is just the amount of trash that accumulates. So I would like for staff to bring back an option that allows for a dumpster to be able to be placed in areas with high calls for service, so that our unhoused population can, you know, dump whatever they don't need anymore. And it could be monitored, you know, from 8:00 AM to noon on Fridays or on weekends, but I wanted to see if we can work with our solid waste department, allocate general fund dollars to help achieve this. And it'll be monitored, it'll be just, you know, we have trash pickup every single week, why don't we give it to our unhoused population, and that way we can help some of the, just cleaning up our city.
Absolutely. So I will work with our staff to figure out some options for that, because you hit on the head with our solid waste folks, it's a Prop 218 enterprise fund, and those are user fees and the like. But we do have a, a significant contract with Forensic Clean in partnership with our solid waste department, so let us figure out what that could look like, and then moreover, the, the encampment you're speaking of, maybe I'll have Nick and the team go take a look as well.
Okay, thank you so much, and that's all.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I'll ask Councilmember Laurie to go first.
Why don't you go first, Sean? And the Vice, the Vice Mayor wants to go last before I make a very brief call.
No, I noticed that, Vice Mayor, because I thought you were up, and then I see you out, and then I see at the bottom.
He wants, it's okay.
Thank you so much for allowing me to go first.
Prerogative of the Vice Mayor here.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank all the staff for being here. I want to also thank Siobhan for being here tonight. Just if our wonderful friends at, at the supervisors, if they wonder what we do on Tuesday night, you have some good reports to take back to them. They usually think we're sitting back and fanning ourselves and drinking Mai Tai, so welcome to city council. I also wanted to really thank Nick Golding. I understand, Mayor Protemp, that the question of who's in charge came up. One thing I, I have experienced, even though DCR was formed, the team was set, today I feel like my office communicating with that department is 10 times more efficient and easier than it was approximately a year ago. So I want to thank you, Nick, because I know that you're out there, we've talked numerous times, and I know your heart is in it. So I know tonight we're all talking about moving DCR this way, moving DC, so I, I gotta give credit where credit is due. So I want to thank you and the rest of the staff within that department, because you guys, you're, you're so efficient on responding back, because my office, I think Councilmember Maple, you indicated that 80% of your calls are around 85%? My calls are about 95% to 97% are coming about unhoused. And, and with every email that I've sent you, I've received a response. So thank you so much. And the same to you, Mario. Thank you so much for going from one department as an, you know, to another department, but now you gotta wear, you know, 200 different hats. So again, I want to thank you and all the staff as well. Councilmember Jennings, I think the workshop is a brilliant idea. To be able to sit and talk and find out solutions, I think it's the best way to go. What I also like to add to our workshop is exactly, what is our budget? How much money do we have for this year that we can allocate to our unhoused community? And kind of work kind of backwards on that. And the same thing to our, our county partners, to really find out what is that budget, so we can all, when we sit and talk, we can have great ideas, but if the, the budget is not there for it, then it becomes not a very efficient meeting, and we agree to something, the public hears it, we can implement it, the public gets frustrated. So I think what I hear from some of my unhoused community members is that frustration, that you promised this, but it didn't happen, which I give them full right. I do have a question, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask you, because I, I want to know. Does the city actually build housing? Do we go and buy a piece of land and build housing on our own? Do we go and buy a piece of land and build housing on our own?
Well, we've bought land and...
Well, I'm just saying, building.
So let me put it this way, the city does not, is not a developer. We don't build affordable housing projects. In fact, we have our Housing Authority person, SHRA, the Executive Director, maybe she could speak to some of the projects that's...
I'm gonna call her over, she was so comfortable there. I felt bad.
She is our affordable housing person.
But she's the guru.
She is indeed.
Yes. So, LaShelle Dozier, SHRA, the city actually does not, but through SHRA as the JPA that was formed for both the city and the county, we do two things. One is, we help to finance affordable housing for other developers. That's what Christine and our housing finance shop, and we do that all the time, we bring those projects before you. And then we attach a regulatory agreement, so we oversee it, and we actually can make sure that that housing is running appropriately based on the parameters that we set forth. But then on our housing authority side, through our housing authority, as well as some of our nonprofit affiliates, yes, we actually do create housing, rehab public housing, but we create new units. I think Mirasol Village is a great example of where we replace those original 218 units, but then we also allow creation of additional density and more affordable housing units there. And the housing authority does own non-public housing as a part of their portfolio.
Thank you so much. Because we repeatedly been asked by the public, the activists and advocates, that the city is not building enough housing. So, and I know they're listening to this. So if you could clarify for my, for me, what role does the city play on being able to build more housing? If any, at all?
The city is the key piece in terms of facilitating and making sure that there is more housing production going on. No matter whether it's through the private developers, or it's through our nonprofit affiliates, that is what the city is doing through the resources that they control that are entrusted with SHRA. So I guess if you looked at it broadly, you could say, yes, the city is very much engaged in creating affordable housing. That's what Home Key is all about, is creating more housing units very, very quickly, which the city underwrites, so to speak.
And then how long does it take for a housing project to be financed?
That all depends. If it's something, the fastest is, that we've seen obviously, is through Project Home Key, which is about, what, about a 12-month timeframe? So that's incredibly fast, from the time that we actually get the funding to moving people in. And other instances where if it's just total new construction, where we're starting from scratch, then you're looking at a three-year timeframe. And that's because the developers have to assemble all of those funding sources. If they didn't have to go for so many competitive funding sources, then that time would be shorter, obviously. But it is usually three years.
So about three years. Thank you very much, Mr. Siobhan, thank you so much. So, and the reason I think this is very important, when we hear three to one, three are becoming unhoused versus one, I think this is one of the major obstacles that the activists, the advocates, the unhoused, the residents, everybody needs to know, that when it takes a project, a minimum of three years, to just get its financing done, and this has nothing to do with us, it has to go through state and the Fed, and then you add another, let's say, year and a half for the building to be built. So right there, at a minimum, we're about, you know, four and a half years before we can produce 100 units. So at the rate that we're going, we're always gonna be behind this eight ball. So I'm hoping that in that workshop, that we can come up with solutions that are a little bit outside the box for now. You know, and that's, I think, you know, where Camp, located on Colfax, that's what it was. I mean, we kind of looked at it and said, what can we do to bring these wonderful individuals in a place where they're safe for time being, until we can get these houses up and running? So I think it's very important that we get the message out there, that this is not something that we can just say, hey, you know, we can build 1,000 units, we can break ground today, and by next year, it's done. I think that's, would that be a first statement to me?
Yes, I think that would be a fair statement in terms of 1,000 units. However, one of the things that we had a lot of success in during redevelopment, I'll keep bringing that up forever, is that we created a pipeline. So yes, it may take, you know, two or three years, however, once you create a pipeline, then you have so many that are coming online every single year, so that you are starting to hit those targets of what it is that you are really striving for.
But do you think the timeline would help us with three to one ratio right now? With your experience, is that timeline really gonna put a dent into this huge issue?
I don't think you can't not do that, in all honesty, because you have to create the affordable housing. There has to be someplace for people to exit. And you've got to get started. You've got to start creating that ongoing system where units are coming online. We're seeing that already, even, like, I'll go back to Home Key, where between, if all of those projects are funded, that's over 600 units that we're able to create. But you have to keep that vision going.
Great, thank you very much. And then, you know, we talk about housing. I like to also know how many facilities we have that help with mental health and substance abuse? Because ultimately today, housing is not the only fix. I think a good percentage of our unhoused community are suffering from some type of, PTSD for sure. I mean, it's there. And I'm glad some of my colleagues indicated that they drive with DC, you know, they ride with DCR and they see it. I actually, you know, tried to go and spend time, and I can tell you, without a doubt, there is a PTSD factor there. So how many facilities do we have that, you know, these individuals can get help while the housing is getting ready for them?
Well, I can speak to the type of housing that we are creating. One of the things that both the city and the county have prioritized, we use the same criteria, and that is permanent supportive housing. So when I talk about SHRA creating housing, and when developers come to us, or when we're doing our outreach and looking for housing, the permanent supportive housing is pretty much the majority of everything that we have financed thus far. And with that comes wraparound services. In all of our projects, you know, we work very, very closely with the county in terms of MHSA dollars, but also with that comes the services and the caseworkers. So they are very service-rich to make sure that we provide the level of support that's necessary for our unhoused individuals when they move into housing.
Does that include, like, rehab and detox facilities as well?
It includes those types of supports.
Support. And is that something that our, obviously, our friends at county participate in that, considering the social services?
Right. And that's a part of making sure that the case management really meets them where they are, and provides the type of resources that each individual needs.
Great, thank you. I have a quick question for you, Ms. Siobhan, and that is, how many facilities are run by county that are exclusively for mental illness and rehab slash detox facilities?
Yeah, so I think that would be a really good question for us to come back during your workshop and present more fully, because we have a lot of different types of treatment facilities along the continuum that we fund, and would love to be able to expand on that. Right now, we operate one mental health treatment center, but we pay for beds at many, so...
Great, thank you so much, appreciate your time. Oh, hold on here. I wrote them down this time, so... Well, we're anticipating to be here till 11:00 tonight, so we're doing good. We went from 90 calls to 20, so that's...
There you go.
Yeah, so now, here's a few things that I would like to get from our workshop. Number one, is that I'd really like to get some data to see, why is it that in certain areas of our city, in the last, I want to say maybe four months to six months, we've seen this rapid increase in our number of unhoused? So I would like to see, you know, what's causing that? Number two, the same thing with RVs and vehicles. In my district, there's approximately around 400 RVs, and I want to know, why is that, like, what's causing that? Same thing with, you know, safe parkings, you know, if we have, you know, something maybe we can add to the workshop as well. Last but not least, when we have this workshop, I would love to see the amount of money that the city has invested in third-party contracts to provide services. And I would love to see the same data from the county's perspective. And that's something I think should be shared with the public, to see, you know, how much money that we're spending on this. And really, I think, at the point where we are today, simple, let's just wait for housing to go up, is great, we should continue pushing that vehicle that direction, but we really need to start thinking outside the box and see how we can find solutions, temporary housing. People are out there, they're out on the street, and we have to come up with a way that we can bring them somehow, whether it's safe parking, indoor, because they're here. And it's not something that we can just throw money at it and it's gonna go away. We really have to, and I'm really hoping that this workshop, it's a nice strategic workshop versus yelling and screaming, because, you know, we can spend 10 hours on a workshop, but if we lose attention within the first 30 minutes, that's a wasted nine and a half hours. But we, I'm hoping that we can come to the table with some creative thinking. I mean, I'm flying out to Southern California, I'm meeting with some of the, you know, there's a gentleman, my neighbor, Mr. Kraft, there's a group of us, in fact, I think some individuals are coming from county as well, to go and see a number of transitional housing that have been implemented in Southern California, hoping that I can pick up some ideas and come back and see, you know, if we can implement those, whether in my district or some of my colleagues' district. But that's what I'd like to ask, Nick, I mean, you're there. We need out-of-the-box ideas that are efficient, effective, and right to the point. And I'm gonna finish this with one last comment, and that is, about six months ago, I had two individuals, they were partners, they were here from another state, and they wanted to just go back to the state they came from. I thought it was an easy fix, but come to find out, it's not that easy. They have to tell us, or the particular agency, where they're going, if they have housing, permanent housing, they have family, they have income, where they're gonna stay. And to me, that was a little bit off, because they're not getting anything from us here. If they're not comfortable being here, why not help them to go back to where they consider home? Why the delay? So that's something else I'd like to discuss during our workshop, that would be great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me start off by thanking the mayor, our, you know, four-by-two partners, the ones that are also prior involved in this, and the board members of the Board of Supervisors. And let me give a personal, you know, gratitude to our city staff and our county staff. And, you know, Mario and your team, Siobhan and your team, you know, we're in this all the time, LaShelle and your team, when we're meeting every week on moving forward with the city-county partnership agreement. It is a tremendous task. You all are here today. Nick, thank you for being out there in my neighborhood, talking to folks about the challenges and the frustration that people have. Why are we having these conversations and questions about wanting a workshop? Because the public has frustration. So I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Jennings, that we should have a workshop. And I'm gonna be the, both the optimist and the curmudgeon here, okay? Oh, one person, and I, no, I didn't forget, but I'm gonna be the optimist and the curmudgeon here. I'd like to, you know, it's not pleased to my colleagues here, don't take this as an admonishment, but as an encouragement, okay? There are 16 pages of a partnership agreement that we all signed. And I want to personally thank our city attorney, and our city manager, our county council, and our county administrator, who pushed the elected officials to create a very direct, a very legally binding and aggressive agreement that hits all these points that we're talking about. If any of you go in and look at the partnership agreement, and I encourage you to read it. And, you know, the point here, I think there were six of us that were on the council at the time, seven really, because, you know, we were ranking chief, ranking chief of staff, and two that frankly, you know, it was part of the campaign conversations. I encourage all of us to really sit down and go through to the shells. These are legally binding requirements on these points. These points and about what our plan is, and for those that haven't paid attention to the county home section plan, you know, that is the city and county home section plan. And what's missing there really is our other cities, you know, we need to bring them in to make it really effective. You know, the, so yes, what is our plan? Guess what? Part of that is in the partnership agreement, and we're legally obligated to execute that. Second, the future of DCR, even in this plan here, talks about how our partnership agreement requires that our 16 city DCR employees, for the moment, is doing that. Now, what do we want to do in the future? That's a fair question to ask. And the last point, the discussion on enforcement. We have a requirement to get to eight outreach teams. We can only get to, I mean, to 10. We have the requirement to get to 10 outreach teams, but we're only at eight. And when we started, we were at two. And part of the challenge was that we needed legal, to get clinicians. Clinicians who could legally go and be part of the outreach, so we can, we can draw down the FSP, the full service partnership dollars, okay? And why is that important? Because that money allows us to use it for everything, mental health, substance abuse, and also housing. We can pay for all of that. But we have to have those clinicians. So we, I gotta hand it to our city staff, and I know they've been working with entities like Sac State, to try to say, how do we get more clinicians? A lot of folks have retired. Like, we have had vacancies, we have had a difficult chance to fill in it. And these jobs, and I remember when we had this conversation, we were in these close session meetings about, let's make sure we also don't create burnout and lose our teams, because these teams are out there physically working and talking to folks, and our teams have understanding of what's available for housing every day, they're housing experts. Read the partnership agreement. It requires that we have a mental health aid training for our city employees too. It requires that we, that the county also advise, and we in partnership have to provide locations. So if all of you want to help us provide locations and places, that's the creativity where we need right now, because it is a challenge to find land. And all of us who've been here for a while have known that sometimes we've had a private property owner, somebody that has land, all of a sudden they back out because their neighbors threaten and sue them. Neighborhood opposition threatens and sues them. So, again, I don't want to take this, don't take this as an admonishment, take this as an encouragement. What does the partnership require us to do, along with outreach and going to the encampments and making sure that we're actually making, you know, the mental health worker contact points? It also requires us to set a path for creating sobering centers, okay? And, you know, and not just, one, centers. In fact, I want to commend, you know, Supervisor Rich Desmond for stating, like, we need to have them in all edges of the county, because right now, guess where it is? County jail. Okay? And it's not okay that in Folsom, or in Citrus Heights, Ranch, or El Grove, or even on the incorporate area, whether it's in the cities, in the residential, or in the parkways, that folks are released at the county facility in here in Sacramento. But that's in the partnership agreement, we have to get there. That's moving us forward. It requires that we come together and put together an actual affordable housing strategy plan, you just heard it today. So I hope that we're not being redundant here in our conversation, because most of those, we're legally obligated to execute these requirements, and there are repercussions for not doing so. Coordinated access, it's part of the requirement. Coordinated access, it's part of the requirement. I want to make sure we point that out. Resources have been an issue. I want to talk about, you know, where we are on our, you know, even hiring officers. We heard that at the last budget, 101 vacancies. If we need an officer to help our teams out there during, you know, the approachment of an encampment, when it does create a situation of risk, we don't have enough of them on patrol. In fact, the only place where we are staffed up fully is our park rangers. And we only have 13 park rangers?
We're adding two.
We're adding two. But still, that puts us at nine parks per one ranger. One ranger has to figure out how to go out and look at nine parks. But, so, thank you, City Manager, for committing to adding more park rangers, so that we have that. But again, I encourage us that, as we look through this workshop, that we circle back and discuss these points, because that's the purpose of our hearing today. Today wasn't about, you know, trying to talk about, you know, the fact that we are opening up a mental health and building a large mental health and substance abuse center that has both housing with a crisis center and a mental health center. We're actually building that in the city of Sacramento. It'll have 240 beds to first start off with, and in final capacity, it could have to have 500 beds where you have the linkage, and it'll be equipped with dental services, not only for the folks who are experiencing homelessness, but pediatric dental for the communities around the neighborhood. And pediatric dental for any of us, you know, who has suffered, I remember being to my first dentist, you know, when I was two years old, and had four teeth pulled plus fillings. Like, that is such a great need in our community. And that's happening all together in one large wellness facility. That's a result of the city-county partnership. So, you know, again, I think these are important questions to be asked. You know, I think the only thing today that was a missed opportunity was not having the same presentation that we had on the county. And maybe it wasn't requested, but I do recall that we had a conversation that whatever we presented to one body, we would present to the other body. And whether one council requests it and the other one doesn't, we're in this together. We should be doing this in tandem and providing the same education and information. So the last piece I'll talk about here is, there's some frustration about whether it's, are we doing enough, or is the county doing enough? Remember, we have a dispute resolution process that's legally binding in this. So if there's a problem, and we're not meeting our demand, and after you all read and we read the partnership agreement, and our partner isn't meeting that, then let's use the dispute resolution process. It isn't to go after someone, it's about making sure we're making progress. I will say that there are areas where we can improve, you know, in the outreach. At the beginning, we were doing six touches, maybe more, in an encampment. I don't agree with that. I think we need to, you know, provide what we have many times. As you heard Assistant City Manager Lada mention, that we have space when folks are out there. Maybe sometimes it's not the preferred, the optimal space, but if we have service available, we should move forward. The other area where I think there is necessity and improvement, and there's a gap in the partnership agreement, but, you know, frankly, we don't have control over it, is in both the sheriff and the DA side. And I hope that we also include our district attorney in this conversation about court order diversion. How do we ensure that we're providing, and for folks who do not wish to make a change, that the court offers an option that's a court order diversion? And I think, and, you know, I've talked to our district attorney, and they're moving in a very thoughtful process for that, and I think they deserve an opportunity to talk about that. But I do have a problem if our county sheriff is displacing people without the work of the partnership agreement. And that's a structure, unfortunately, of an elected office, that while the county funds, doesn't have jurisdiction over their operation. So I think that's an important piece that is missing, that we have to focus on, to be able to get there. I'm an optimist. Why am I an optimist here? Because I've seen where we have made a significant impact. And it goes back to a resource issue, so I was talking to my colleague, Councilmember Jennings. We should have this before June 30th. We should have this workshop before June 30th, because whether we can afford it, or whether we have a resource challenge or not, council members, the public, need to know what those challenges are, and what the reality of those challenges are. Are we going to hire all these folks and be able to hire these folks in a month? No. And so I want to be able to also, and I had this frank conversation with my neighborhood when we had our town hall, about where our challenges are, and how we're triaging and prioritizing the most difficult areas. Roseville Road in District 2 was a challenge. It was a difficult area, it was a nightmare for people who live nearby. Diaz Avenue in my district, very low-income immigrant refugee community, the only walking place for people, for the kids to get to Willsey Wood, that's a challenging area. In District 5, you know, all you have to do is look at the heat map and look at District 5's numbers, they're pretty much up there. And it is a resource issue. So I think it's important to have the workshop, so we understand the resource challenges. But I do feel very optimistic about where we're going, because this partnership agreement and this conversation we've had, in every day and every week, and the fact that every Tuesday, the city's meeting with its staff, responding to constituent calls, and setting a priority, has helped us move faster. Do we all wish this was five years ago or six years? Yeah, but you know what? You know, let's not, what did they say, cry over spilled milk, you know? We have to move forward where we are today in a very sober, a very deliberate way, where we can see that. So all I'll ask my colleagues, and, you know, is to make sure that you read the partnership agreement, because it outlines critical things. And I will go back again to clarifying, to highlighting, the need for making sure we're optimizing the FSP, the full service partnership. Because we cannot, we can't pay for this forever if we're not drawing down those dollars. So I'll stop there. I just want to thank again, you know, this creativity about options and whatnot, that's what, you know, thank you, my colleague from District 2, because that's exactly the conversation we need to be having, but it's the affordable housing piece, it's in the partnership agreement. And then finally, I'll say to my constituents, they're, you know, my constituents reach out to me, and there are areas in my district that, you know, have encampments. And if you notice in the heat map, it's many times, it's, you know, the higher-income areas have less heat, and lower-income areas have more encampments, and we're prioritizing our city resources in where we have the most encampments, so we can make the biggest change. Now, sometimes, it frustrates those with means, because they don't want to see it, but we have both inequity and also just the right fiscal responsibility of how to triage the biggest challenges first, so we make a clear and visible improvement. Because at the end of the day, this partnership agreement means nothing if we don't actually make a clear and visible improvement. I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor, and just, again, not an admonishment, it's an encouragement for my colleagues to go through the, you know, the partnership agreement and move forward.
Yep. So I'm going to wrap us up here, and just to say, I really appreciate what you said, Vice Mayor Getta, because you're absolutely right, and it's not intended, I know, as an admonition. It's completely appropriate for members of this council to ask and re-ask any questions, and especially for new members, who haven't been through the fights over shelter siting or tiny home siting, or the dozen enforcement versus capacity debates we've had on this council, to want to not only learn, but also to weigh in themselves on what the line is, to hear from the city attorney, for example. For no matter what one's frustrations and desires are, there are some very significant legal limitations on what we can do with enforcement. And so a workshop is fine, but I will tell you, it's more than fine, it's the right thing. But I'm concerned about a couple of things. I don't want our teams, our city and county teams, frankly, to have time off task here. Because I've also asked them for 200 beds, before we get the other beds up. And we figured out 100 tonight, by the way, today. I mean, really, between the Auburn North Center and Miller Park, and we're going to work with the county, whether it's Vagabond, whether it's something else, SHRA, I've talked to Ms. Dozier as well about this today, because the key to the kingdom, in terms of humane enforcement, really being able to move people out of places where they should not live, is, yes, permanent housing, but in the meantime, it is these beds. I'm sorry, it's the key to the kingdom. And so I want the focus to be on that. And so I don't want the staff spending days and days and days preparing a formal workshop that has to go through every single thing we've gone through dozens of times on this dais. So how we put this together in a way that's responsive appropriately to Councilmember Jennings and the new members is great, because it will help us, right, to sort of restate and reiterate where we are, and maybe some new ideas and creativity will come out of it. But Eric is right, we are contractually bound to the partnership agreement, and I don't say that grudgingly. This is, it's a little pride of authorship, because as your city's mayor, I will say, with the help of my colleagues here, and of course, the city manager and his team, I will this thing. Whatever it takes is my concept. The concept of 10 outreach teams was my concept. And I'm just saying it because Eric's right, it can't be dismissed, not out of pride of authorship, but what we really did with the partnership agreement was we defined roles and responsibilities in exactly the way that many of my colleagues are asking for. So let's, let's just be, I don't want to send the staff out on, I want them on task here, in terms of getting these beds, so that we can humanely enforce. Let's put together the workshop, absolutely valuable, but let's do it in a way that's reasonable, and that allows us to really continue to do the work and implement this agreement that is groundbreaking in its concepts, but only will be groundbreaking in its impact if we actually implement it with the same fierceness that led to the negotiation and the eventual coming together. Fair? Councilman Lowien Jennings, sure, you want to respond to?
Mr. Mayor, if I may chime in?
It's after 9:30.
We do need to, our council rules or procedure, Chapter 8E4, state that we need a motion to continue the meeting past 9:30 PM.
Okay, we're going to go. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, good.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lowie, and then Jennings.
Mr. City Manager, Councilmember Jennings asked for a workshop, June, by the end of June, if I'm not mistaken.
Before June 30.
June 30. Is that, again, as a city manager, is that enough time for yourself and staff to get ready for that workshop, considering there's other work that needs to be done? So I'm just, you know, I want to check this by you, to make sure that we're asking for something that's achievable.
I think in the weeks to come, we'll know with certainty, because our projected date for budget adoption is June 13th, but depending on how things go at BNA and then coming back to the council, there might be more deliberation. And so, I mean, if we can't make that date, I will absolutely report back to this council on that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with those dates.
For now, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, I think you answered my question as well, and in hearing everybody respond to the proposal for the workshop, a lot of things got added on, which means that there's probably going to have to be more than one workshop, but it may not be as time-sensitive as the first one before the 30th. And so if we can stay specific to some of the areas that I listed in the beginning and have a conversation about which ones of those rise to the top, I think our workshop can happen, I know it can happen before the 30th, as long as we don't try to do everything in one workshop. So in my opinion, we may have to have more than one, if we're going to cover all the subjects that I heard tonight.
That's fine, we should be meeting monthly on the subject in this kind of forum, that's great.
Is that a motion?
I don't think we need one, I think it's a clear intent of the council, and I think it's the right thing. But maybe leave it to the city manager and myself, with our teams, to kind of finesse this. I understand the enforcement question is the one that you raised first, what the legal parameters are, and then what the priorities are based upon the system that we have, why don't we tackle that first? I think that's manageable, and it's important. And why don't we do that? Fair?
Fair.
Okay.
As long as we have it before the 30th.
Okay.
Yeah, or on the 30th, huh? It's good. We can make it happen.
Turn in pumpkins July 1st or something?
No, 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 no. I want to be intentional, I want to focus and be intentional.
Yes, no, no, very good, very good. Okay, no, we'll do it. Okay. Very good. That ends the hearing, thank you all very much. And again, Siobhan, thank you, and Shelle, everybody, our teams, everybody. I know it turned out to be a longer evening, apologize for the inconvenience. There we go. Are there, well, we got public testimony and items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Mike Snell.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to make this quick, this is just in regards to the business tax in the city, me knowing that I'm going to be an equity cannabis retail operator. My statement is just real quick, I'm speaking on behalf of equity operators throughout the city that are looking for support from city representatives. The cannabis industry is experiencing a crisis, mostly a result after taxation, examined by state tax revenue precipitously declining, cannabis tax, exercise tax revenue is declining. The state will adjust the tax rate from 15% to 19% to maintain levels of obligatory spending. This crisis disproportionately impacts equity and small businesses, and businesses that are in the process but have not opened yet. We're going to, we were hoping to meet with city officials independently to discuss an adopted budget before the deadline on the 13th, on June 13th, and we'll be reaching out directly to each member, if, and I'm just requesting that we can get that support, just to kind of discuss that, as we are in the budget era. And the main artery of equity has been severed, and it's kind of a really emergency situation. So I'd appreciate that support from council, if we can get that commitment, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Yes, hello again. I guess I'll keep this quick, because it's getting late, but I wanted to just briefly comment on some of the decorum issues that came before the council earlier. I think it's a shame, the way that it was, y'all chose to handle it by just forcing everybody out of chambers and preventing so many people from making comments on an issue as important as our, the crisis of unhoused folks in Sacramento County. I share the anger of a lot of people who commented earlier about the fact that unhoused folks were not able to provide comment on that issue. And I think, I think that it does a disservice to the council to, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to say that this was definitely a violation of the Brown Act in text, but it certainly is a violation of the spirit of the Brown Act, which is intended to make, you know, deliberations about council matters open and available and accessible to the public. So I, you know, I can't imagine the Nazis will stop coming, so hopefully, y'all figure out a better way to deal with it going forward. You know, you could always just not let the Nazis come back, but hey, that's just my opinion. Anyway, that's all I've got, have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user four. Call-in user four, you'll unmute.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert, and I wanted to say that, from what I witnessed tonight, there's potential for free speech incidents. And I believe they're going to just keep, and I don't know what "they" means, but the focus, you handled it as best as you could, I guess. But I also wanted to say that it was a wonderful experience that's happened with the Grand Drumline, and I hope that they're ready to go, because June is next week, and I hope they have a safe round trip and come back with some great memories. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is APTP Healing Justice.
Hey, y'all, it's Carly again. I am just calling in to talk a little bit more about what happened this morning. So it was very clear that the council is interested So, it was very clear that the council is interested more in preserving the expression of white supremacy than it is in the preservation of the expression of the majority of the residents, including those who are most impacted by what was spoken about this evening. So, when we were cleared out of the chambers because y'all were upset, that we were upset that a white supremacist was called up as the first speaker and decided to take a recess to, again, preserve the ideals of white supremacy, it was just made very, very, very clear where y'all stand. Just like in previous instances where Mindy Cuffy has shut down a woman of color speaking about a serial killer targeting unhoused women near Camp Resolution, which is a large homeless encampment of women, particularly queer women. You chose to shut her down at the end of her two minutes, whereas when a white supremacist was speaking, you gave him an additional 30 seconds to speak. I know it's only 30 seconds, but, you know, I'm a manager in a call center. 30 seconds is a long fucking time, y'all, okay? It's clear that y'all uphold the ideals of patriarchal, ableist, white supremacy.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Yeah, the last speaker and the speakers that have been calling it out tonight are not wrong. I mean, it's something that has been discussed about since last year when one of your former council members decided to, it's about racist rhetoric about one of your own council members' cultures and whatnot, as well as trying to remove, like, commission members, speaking out on white supremacy rooted in city council culture. The city council rules, you have every right and authority to pick and choose when and where you enforce it, and it's very telling how you choose to enforce them. Rather than allowing dozens of people, at least 20, if not 70, according to one council member who was joking about it, dropped down from 70 to 20 public commenters, you chose to prioritize the feelings and sense of security for five, like, for five white people who were there to spew anti-Semitic rhetoric and white supremacist hate speech as a public platform, and you used 25 police officers to effectively shut the meeting down, preventing, like, several members of the unhoused community who had managed to secure rise to travel out here to speak and then weren't able to because you switched to Zoom without giving them any sort of accommodation or access to participate. I can't, like, I have no idea how that isn't a violation of the Brown Act and people's First Amendment rights, but it's very clear who the rules are intended to serve. It's very clear the white supremacy culture that is rooted within city council rules and procedures. Sorry, not sorry, Mindy. You have a fucking choice whether you decide, like, what you want to enforce. Sorry for my language, but again, at the end of the day, you pick and choose which you want to enforce and which you don't. So, if you're not willing to enforce the rules consistently, why should anybody show any respect for them in this, like, in this instance?
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Brooke. Brooke, you'll unmute.
I'm just calling in because I came to City Hall tonight with the intention of speaking on a resident at Camp Resolution, Holly Porter. She's quadriplegic, and she was promised housing 60 days ago and hasn't gotten it yet. And I was gonna call and advocate about it, but it was shut down because apparently, the city council allows hate speech, and so, the residents were mad about that, you know, obviously. And I'm just pretty upset that this took away so much of the interest of, like, the rights of people so that we could, like, pander to Nazis. Like, it's not right. Like, we, like, people need housing. Like, while I was at city council today, people at the island were swept, and someone who lives there is disabled. He can't even use the bathroom alone, and he's a vet. He, like, served this country, and, like, he has nothing. He should not be living on the streets. There should be services for unhoused people, especially people who are disabled. And today, your city police told a man that he had to be gone by the end of the day, and he is in a wheelchair, and he is a veteran, and he can't even go to the bathroom by himself. And it is really disappointing that I had to be here at city council today and I couldn't be there for him to offer support, and now he's gone. All his shit's gone because of what your city police did to him, a veteran who, like, served our country. Like, he deserves better. Holly deserves better. Stop making promises you can't keep. Stop, just give people housing.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Max.
Hey, y'all. You hearing it super tough? Really fucking here for it. But y'all hear it tough all the time, and I think that that's probably what the problem is, is that you're tired of hearing it so tough that you just tune it out. Y'all, you had white supremacists come into your chambers today, and the truth is, is I've tried to speak to you about this, about the fact that everybody's coming in because this is gonna be the place of democracy, and then look at your reaction, it was to kick everybody out. Don't you think that that leads to escalation? I don't think you even understand the things that you do. You, what, you're just not thinking beyond your action. You're not thinking in terms of creating spaces that are, that allow for many voices, that allow for different able-bodied types, to allow for access, to allow for health, to allow for care. You have not done that, and so, therefore, you have literally created and fostered the very culture that could even bring somebody like a white supremacist into this fucking space. Instead of somebody who wants to come in and say, why do we have unhoused people? Can we give them some housing? You just heard that last time, right? Give them housing. The fact that that camp that was just spoke on, and I love the drilling of the county tonight, because the truth is, is that camp was swept, has been swept five times in a month. The island has been swept, out from the island, out onto the levee, now to, like, four times just from the Rangers. How much money that cost? Then, today, with your officers who showed up, how much money that cost? Then, with your officers who showed up today and only gave one verbal warning? And then came back and took his stuff while people are at City Hall, trying to tell you about the crisis that you are creating? You can sit there and drill the county all you want to, but don't act like the city council has not actively made policy decisions that have acted these things out and has caused this harm and this trauma. So, if you can look at the county like that, I need you all to take a 2.5-second look in the mirror, not even 2.5 seconds, much longer than that, and as always, do fucking better.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nick. We have two more speakers this evening. Nick, if you'll unmute?
I think I unmuted.
You did. Please proceed.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I'm pretty disappointed, obviously. My name's Nikki. I participate with a lot of orgs in town. I'm pretty disappointed in the way that things went down tonight. I think you could have protected folks' capacity and their hard work to come out and speak on behalf of themselves instead of protecting white supremacy and instead of leaving that up to the people to protect that. I think that's really disappointing. I'll say, too, that we have a problem in this town where we don't recognize disability justice, we don't recognize climate justice, we don't recognize racial justice as a part of the homelessness issue. And if we don't start to do that, we're gonna completely, 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 completely continue to miss. And we're missing right now, you know? Like, we're missing the mark right now. That's why we have this explosion. We're missing the mark on tenant protections. That's the biggest reason, right? We have this huge influx, and we don't have the capacity to handle it because we've never funded the emergency response system in commensurate way to the way we defunded housing in the 70s and 80s. So, and the way we continue to, and the way we continue to prioritize funding matters, and we need to prioritize long, long, long-term housing that makes space for folks with disabilities. And that is the issue that folks were trying to bring to you tonight around Holly, and I hope you understand, you have failed Holly, and you have failed that community that are experiencing disability, and that, oof, oof, it's, we all suffer together every day, and I hope you can understand what suffering looks like.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Shelley W. Shelley W., if you'll unmute?
Shelley W., if you'll unmute? Shelley W., if we could unmute here for the clerk? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor, I've sent multiple requests to unmute. I have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, our city staff, for a long time. That concludes the business of our day. We are adjourned at 10:03 PM.